Okay, that sounds a little better. I'm gonna give everybody about a minute to settle in and we're doing a couple more things to the paperwork, but I should get us started here in about thirty seconds or sixty seconds. Okay, everybody settled nice and quickly, so I'll get us started. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl Granrath. I'm the hearing examiner for tonight's hearing. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is for me to gather evidence and especially testimony, from which we'll create a record for the application that's in front of us tonight. And from the record that will most likely be completed and closed by the end of this evening, I take that record and all the evidence and everything that the county staff has given me thus far. And I review that and I write a recommendation within two weeks that I send over to city staff, and they forward it on to your county commissioners. This matter will ultimately go in front of your county commissioners for the final decision. But the main point of tonight is for me to gather everybody's public testimony and any other information I can get, to have a thorough record on which to base my recommendation to your commissioners. As far as our general process for tonight, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have an overview of the application from staff. And following that will be up to a thirty-minute presentation from the applicant and/or their representatives. I can and will be asking questions as appropriate throughout both of their presentations for points of clarification, information I need. Following that will be our public testimony. So I'll go over some of this again when we get there. But just a couple of ground rules. I'm gonna have each individual come up. So we're gonna go in order of in favor, neutral, and then opposed. Given the number of people here tonight, I'm going to generally limit the public testimony to three minutes. I do have some discretion to limit time. At some hearings, I do see a hand up, but now it's not a time for public comment. We can address that later during your public comment if you so desire. Generally speaking, I'm gonna limit individuals to three minutes. I do allow a lot of leeway to go over points being made. It's not gonna be a hard and fast rule, but in the interest of everyone's time and the amount of people that are here, I'm gonna limit it to three minutes. I do know that we have some representative groups, which I really appreciate those individuals who have gotten together and can have a single representative represent them. Those groups will have up to fifteen minutes. A couple other things. So when you're called, have you come up to the podium? Say your name and address for the record. And then one of the main ground rules is I would ask that you direct all testimony towards me and not anyone else in the room, and just ask everyone to be as courteous and polite as possible. Make sure that I can hear. And again, I'll go over a couple of these little things when we get there. After that, there will be an opportunity for me to ask follow-up questions of the applicant or the staff and the applicant and the staff to make further comments. I believe they have up to fifteen minutes. The applicant may have up to fifteen minutes for that part if they want to address follow-up points to questions and comments that have come up during the public comment period. But that public comment period is gonna be your last chance to get your public comments onto the record that I'm gonna put together. So I know some people noted that they didn't want to speak. I'll do a, I'll make an announcement when we get to that time that if everyone changes their mind, that they can come up and make their public comment for the record. So without further ado, I think I'll get us started and kick it over to staff. Anything, any administrative matters before we get started?
No, sir.
Okay. We have Mr. Foudy for the county. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Hearing Examiner. For the record, Joseph M. Foudy, Planner 2 with Cootenay County Community Development. Before you tonight is case number CUP 250008. A request by Timothy and Erica Mitchell for a conditional use permit to establish a place of assembly in the rural zoning district. The parcel is approximately twenty acres in size, as you can see here, with proposed event operations contained within the northern ten acres, which I'll get to later on a site plan. Surrounding development in the area is entirely rural residential, with lots ranging from one acre to twenty acres in size. This view illustrates the site's topography and the density of vegetation across the parcel. Steep slopes are present around the parking area, proposed parking area, and trail leading to the event venue. Wooded areas do provide natural acoustic and visual buffering. You can see South Greens Ferry Road and West Little Cedar Lane that ultimately connect to the venue. Property is zoned rural. A place of assembly isn't allowed to use in the rural zone with approved conditional use permit. Surrounding parcels are exclusively rural residential as well. Parcel is designated as country in the Cootenay County Comprehensive Plan. This designation prioritizes preservation of open space and supports rural residential uses while allowing limited non-residential uses that fit within the rural context. The applicant proposes a seasonal outdoor event venue hosting up to twenty-five events per year with a maximum of two hundred attendees inclusive of staff and vendors. Facilities include an event lawn with non-fixed seating accommodating up to one hundred fifty-four people, a changing room, and depending on the applicant's proposal, either portable or PhD-approved restrooms. Proposed parking exceeds minimum requirements with forty-eight standard and three accessible spaces. Potable water will be delivered and all event-related food will be delivered. No onsite food preparation will take place. The property is accessed via West Little Cedar Lane, a private road governed by a sixty-foot easement providing physical and legal access. The easement has been confirmed to allow commercial use on the property. West Little Cedar Lane, as we saw before, connects directly to South Greens Ferry Road, a public road maintained by the Post Falls Highway District. There is a future intention here with a proposed two-lot minor subdivision with the event venue being located entirely on the northern ten acres. Site plan, this is the latest revised site plan from the applicant. The event lawn, reception area, parking, and trail are fully contained within the northern ten acres. Existing vegetative buffers will be maintained with the exception of necessary disturbance for the development of parking and trail areas. With that said, the applicant will be required to implement landscaping plan to revegetate disturbed areas to the greatest extent possible, provide buffering and screening. Site photos. As you can see in the left photo, we have West Little Cedar Lane leading up to the event venue. On the right-hand side, you have the turnout that is on the site plan, which, oops, my bad, is right there where the proposed parking will connect with. The reception area is located here with a future turnout, IFC-approved turnout here. And right there, it would be the event lawn area. This is the topography showing the location of the turnout where parking would connect to. The fire pit area with leading to the event seating area. Public agencies. The project was sent to all applicable agencies with jurisdiction. Panhandle Health District stated that the applicant must use portable restrooms or must apply for a wastewater system to match the use. Post Falls Highway District requires that the applicant apply for an approach permit. They did also require the applicant to provide a trip generation letter, which has been submitted and reviewed by Post Falls Highway District. And in that review, they stated no opposition to that trip generation letter. Idaho Department of Fish and Game, no concerns. Cootenay County Fire and Rescue District, compliance with 2018 International Fire Code. West Little Cedar Lane, as you saw in that one image, there is some vegetation that has been growing over the past however many years. And so it will be required to be widened back out to the twenty feet to satisfy IFC requirements. Cootenay County Building Division, an accessible route is required from the point of arrival to all improved elements. And then Idaho Department of Lands, if any timber removal is proposed for the development, they need to follow, the applicant will be required to follow the Idaho Forest Practices Act. Cootenay Electric Cooperative issued no concerns. At the time of public agency comment, Cootenay County Sheriff's Office issued a statement of no concern. However, as earlier of today, we have learned that Cootenay County Sheriff Bob Norris, who is in attendance, would like to rescind his comment of no concern, and he was available to speak.
Mr. Norris, do you want to come up and make a comment?
Yes, please. Yes, Mr. Examiner, Sheriff Robert Norris for the record. The Sheriff's Office would like to amend the letter that is dated on September the nineteenth with no concerns at this time to significant concerns at this time. Most of this has to do with evacuations and the increased fire risk that we continue to have here in south of the river. We have recently had a series of events, fires, where evacuation was necessary. And it's not just evacuation for the duration of the fire. The actual evacuation generally goes on and there's nobody that's able to come in or out of the area for, depending on the size and the fuel that is available, for seven, ten, fourteen days. So it's not just a one- or two- or three-day event. This, these are long, sustained events. There's only three access points to be able to leave that area. And in the event that there was a significant fire, which we have had in that area, it would be very, very difficult to be able to evacuate as many people that live in that community now. So that's, we will be writing a letter to articulate those concerns. But the evacuations, which is the responsibility of the sheriff, I'm very, very concerned about the fire risk, the engraver beetle action that we see south of the river that increases that risk and evacuations for that entire community.
So is, do you have a final position as opposed?
We, yes, we oppose this application.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. At time of public comment period, nine comments were received in support of the application and one hundred and forty-three were received in opposition. After the close of the public comment period, seventeen comments in support and fifteen comments in opposition were received. The concerns raised alleging an incorrect classification of a place of assembly for proposed use. If I, if I may, I'd like to take a moment to address that due to that alleged misclassification. Cootenay County staff, after learning of this alleged incorrect classification, we evaluated Article 2.10 of the Cootenay County Land Use and Development Code, specifically Section 821002A Subsection 2, wherein the Director of Community Development is authorized to determine that a new or unlisted use is similar to or a lesser form of an existing use which is permitted of right or which requires a conditional use permit. And then applicable standards to that use may be applied. Staff concluded that although the defined term place of assembly references a building, the functional characteristics of the proposed use are substantially similar to a place of assembly as regulated under Section 85119 of the Land Use Code and that the application may be processed as a place of assembly subject to all applicable performance standards, seminal requirements, and conditional use permit procedures. Concerns were also raised with potential impact to the Rathan Prairie Aquifer Surface Water Resource Area with the surrounding neighborhood compatibility, safety for fire danger, road access, noise, visual impacts, wildlife encounters, vandalism, and proximity of existing event venues. The two examples that were provided in public comment were Quinlan Park and Settlers Creek. Staff analysis concludes that the proposal will be required to comply with all rural zone and CUP standards. Agencies with jurisdiction prior to tonight with the Sheriff's Office identified conditions for wastewater, Panhandle Health District, International Fire Code, Cootenay Fire Rescue, and approved approach from Post Falls Highway District. Site constraints, the county does acknowledge that there are steep slopes present and it could require geotechnical analysis review and best management practices at time of site disturbance. Noise, visual, and environmental impacts can be mitigated through limited hours from ten PM to eight AM. Landscaping and vegetative buffers to be maintained or revegetated to the greatest extent possible. Sanitation controls essentially the fact that the, or the proposal that potable water will be provided, no restroom, no internal restroom use will be permitted, and that no food prep is onsite. Due to the amount of public opposition to the proposal, while their applicant has attempted to identify certain areas for mitigation, they will be responsible for demonstrating overall compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. I stand for any questions that you have.
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. One thing I wanted to touch on real quick before I kick it over to the applicant was this trip generation letter. I'm not sure exactly how to address this, but I did take a look at that and that trip generation letter classified this as a church and then made calculations of, all right, it's gonna be twenty-three or twenty-four trips, peak trips, a day. Which, to me, doesn't seem like a sufficient analysis for what's actually gonna be taking place there. It's not gonna be daily trips. And it's really, in my mind, needs more of an analysis of when there's gonna be people actually coming and going at greater volumes during specific times. So I understand the Highway District looked at it. Did they, in the comments that went to the Highway District, did they understand that this was gonna be basically a wedding venue?
Yes, they were informed in a few conversations over the phone and in email correspondence with the Highway District that this was a proposal for an event venue that would have host weddings and recreation, public gatherings, community events.
Okay. And they were okay with that trip generation letter, with that classification?
To my knowledge, that's what their analysis was. It's perhaps up to the applicant to demonstrate otherwise. I did have one area at public comment, I did forget to enter these into the record, so if you don't mind.
Sure.
Can I enter the public comments that were seen after the close?
Okay.
Entered into the record as HE 1001.
Okay, I think that's all I'll ask you right now, but I'll kick it over to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. You may say so again when you come up to the mic, so it can be more audibly recorded. All right, well, we have the applicants, we have Ms. Blalock?
I'm actually gonna have Anthony Bowery, which is the professional engineer that prepared the trip generation letter, speak first, if that's okay?
Sure.
To answer your questions.
That's a great idea.
Anthony Bowery, for the record. So just to touch on the trip generation letter, we were asked in writing by the Post Falls Highway District to write a trip generation letter. And we did. We followed the format and the associated Highway District standards. They have clearly what they're looking for in their analysis of a format. And then to our understanding, they approved the letter and the use. And on their analysis, they didn't request any additional information.
Okay. Are there categories that are, I mean, I've seen varying trip generation letters. I'm not sure I've seen one for, where there's a use classification that's, because I understand you gotta pick one that's close enough. How'd you go about choosing that classification?
Yeah, so the Institute of Transportation Engineers prepares, or they use crowdsourced information. And there wasn't a wedding venue or event center like this where people have provided information to draw estimates from. And so the seemingly closest representative type of use was a church. Kind of in similar, that peak use is during different times of typical traffic, peak use.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Hearing Examiner. My name is Stephanie Blalock. I'm a land use planner with Veritas. Our address is 3906 North Shriver Way in Coeur d'Alene. And I'm here today representing Tim and Erica Mitchell in their conditional use permit request. Joseph provided a comprehensive analysis of the Joseph provided a comprehensive analysis of the project. My presentation's going to focus on demonstrating that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. Before I move into the required findings, I'd like to briefly recap the Mitchell Event Center proposal, so everyone has a clear scope of the project. The Mitchell family owns 40 acres, so they own the 20 acres that this is on, and they also own the adjacent 20 acres to the east. 10 acres are proposed for the seasonal event center. The request is for a maximum of 25 events per year with attendance capped at 200 people, including service providers. All events would conclude by 10:00 PM. Food services catered only, potable water is brought onsite, and portable restrooms will be used unless the permanent facilities are constructed in the future. The existing residence will remain a private home, and the dense natural vegetation on the property will stay in place, providing both visual separation and effective noise buffering. Now I'd like to turn to the required findings and demonstrate how the Mitchell Center, Event Center is compatible with the existing homes, businesses, and neighborhoods, and with the natural characteristics of the area. I broke each of these categories down and addressed them individually, starting with compatibility with existing homes. The Mitchell property is surrounded by large acreage parcels and significant natural vegetation, which creates substantial physical separation between the dwellings. The proposed event area is located on the northern portion of the property and sits approximately 1,150 feet from the nearest existing residence. Little Cedar Lane provides access to only one home, the Mitchells. And because the venue is self-limited to just 25 seasonal events, all ending by 10:00 PM, its intensity is lower than many other approved assembly uses within the county. Examples are Settlers Creek, Elk Point, and Cedar Mountain. These features together demonstrate clear compatibility with the surrounding residential Next is compatibility with existing businesses and rural neighborhoods. This is a low-intensity seasonal outdoor use. No permanent commercial structure is proposed. Parking and circulation are entirely contained on private property, which eliminates spill over onto public roads. The trafficked impact will be infrequent and carefully managed. Most days, traffic on local roads remains unchanged. Even on event days, the peak traffic is brief, usually on weekends or evenings when general road traffic is lighter. Importantly, the Mitchell family lives onsite and shares the same rural lifestyle and values as their neighbors. Their presence ensures that the property is carefully managed and the events remain respectful of the surrounding community. This limited, well-managed, proposed commercial activity is consistent with rural zoning, which allows places of assembly by conditional use when impacts are contained onsite. Next is compatibility with the natural characteristics. The event area is located within an existing clearing, so minimal vegetation removal is needed. Natural vegetation will remain functioning as a visual buffer, a noise buffer, and habitat protection. No groundwater extraction is associated with the events as potable water is brought in. These measures ensure a low-impact development that preserves the natural, ecological, and visual character of the property. It's helpful to look at established, successful venues in the area to understand how our proposal fits within the existing rural context. Settlers Creek, located just three miles away, offers a useful comparison. They host significantly more events, they operate year-round, and have substantially less vegetative buffering. They also have 10 homes within 1,150 feet of their venue compared to zero for the Mitchell property. Despite that, Settlers Creek has had no noise or compatibly, compatibility complaints filed with Cootney County since operations began in 2008, and I confirm that with code compliance. This demonstrates that when vegetation, distancing, and operational limits are in place, as they are in this proposal, will event venues can coexist successfully within surrounding, surrounding To summarize, compatibility is achieved through significant physical separation from neighboring residences, dense natural vegetation remaining in place, very limited seasonal operations, minimal land disturbance, onsite management by the Mitchell family, and consistency with similar, successful rural venues. For these reasons, the proposal clearly meets the compatibility requirements. The next three slides are photos of the area. A couple of them are the same as Joseph had. This is a zoomed-out aerial. That's the Mitchells' property right there. The, um, venue, event center area will be located right here, and this will be the parking This is the event location. It shows that it's heavily vegetated. And this is a zoomed-out picture. This is Greens Ferry Road. As of 4:00 PM today, all agencies approved or approved with conditions. We understand evacuation concerns, and we will provide an evacuation plan in the events of an emergency. The project also aligns directly with a comprehensive plan. It supports Objective 1B, Policy 4, which encourages reasonable economic opportunities for rural property owners. It supports Objective 5, Policy 1, allowing limited commercial uses that preserve rural character and rely on limited infrastructure. Most of the natural vegetation will remain, additional vegetation will be added, and the land retains its rural form and function. Under the country designation, the comprehensive plan specifically encourages low-impact economic activity that does not require a full range of services, exactly what is proposed here. The applicants take wildfire concerns very seriously. The site will be managed more proactively than a typical rural parcel. Dry brush removal, defensible space, and regular maintenance all reduce fire loads. Fire extinguishers will be onsite, and events will be carefully selected and personally managed by Tim Mitchell. Because the Mitchell family lives on the property, they are the most directly impacted by the success and conduct of the venue. Their priority is to operate in a way that respects their home, their neighbors, and this rural community. This proposal represents a low-impact, family-operated venue that preserves open space, protects residential character, and fits squarely within the county's vision for rural entrepreneurship. That does conclude my presentation. I do have a short drone video of the Mitchells' property that I will start as Mr. Mitchell takes the podium for his presentation. Before I start the video, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Hearing Examiner. My name's Tim Mitchell, and I live at 9796 West Little Cedar Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Tonight I want to share not the technical aspects of our application, that's been covered by our consultants in the county, but the heart behind this project. Our history in this community and why we're proposing, and what we're proposing is not only appropriate for this property but compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and the rural character of this area. My wife and I are raising our family of six on this land. This is our home. Our children play here, we gather here as a family, this is where we live our daily lives. We would never bring anything into our own property, literally right next to our home, that would disrupt our quality of life, jeopardize our privacy, or create an environment that isn't fitting for raising our children. We are surrounded by 40 acres, and the natural topography, elevation changes, existing vegetation create a setting where gatherings can occur without imposing upon or intruding into our neighboring properties. I've been a neighbor, I've been an entrepreneur in North Idaho for over 15 years, and together with my wife, I own and operate one of the region's most trusted event and hospitality companies. We have won awards, we've been selected to represent our region as a member of an elite group called Leading Caterers of America. Only 75 other caterers in the nation are members. We serve over 600 events a year, from office lunches to corporate galas to events for even the governor of Idaho. This is our profession, this is our livelihood. We have a deep understanding of how events operate, how to manage people, how to control noise, how to handle traffic flows, and how to ensure that events run smoothly and respectfully. Because of this experience, we sent, spent years searching for a property than that the long list of compatibility requirements that responsible venue owners understand is unnecessary. We knew exactly what we wanted and exactly what we did not want. We needed a property with enough natural separation to avoid imposing on neighbors yet close enough to town for guests to access. We needed natural beauty that didn't require mass development to achieve. We needed land with natural buffers, elevation, and vegetation. On this side, our closest neighboring rooftop is over 1,000 feet away. That was one of the most important deciding factors in purchasing this land. The physical characteristics of this property make it well-suited for this type of use. Verdis has demonstrated that in detail. Before we ever submitted a purchase agreement to this property, we took steps to be transparent with our neighbors. In 2013, or 2023 of September, before we even made an offer on the property, we asked the then-current owner of the property to arrange a meeting with our neighbors, Steve Tanner, Roy Ellie, Jeff, and Dana Woods. We sat together in front of the home that we dreamed to purchase, face-to-face, and opened shared intentions. We shared our business background and our experience, and our desire to build something that works with the neighborhood, not against it. We were very open about our plans and nothing was hidden. My family's been in North Idaho since 1990. This is where I went to grade school, where I graduated high school, where I had my first job, where I met my beautiful wife and brought home our four children from the Cootney County Hospital. Our entire family lives here, works here, worships here, shops here, and participates in the community. My family and my business support countless charities, nonprofits, and ministries throughout our business. We are very well-rooted here within this community, and we care deeply about this place. This project is not about, um, is about supporting our family and sustaining our ability to steward this 40-acre property reasonably. As everyone knows, the cost of living, taxes, and land maintenance have increased dramatically. This project allows us to generate the income needed to support our family of six while preserving the land as an open space, maintaining it and, and keeping it healthy and a viable long-term property. I also want to speak clearly to our integrity in how we've approached this entire process. The county has likely heard of venues that have opened without permits and were quickly shut down. That is not who we wanted to be. From the beginning, before purchasing, purchasing the property, we engaged with county development staff. Vlad and community planning and his team guided us on how to do everything the correct way, and we followed their direction exactly. We had our attorneys review our road easement to confirm commercial access. We hired a professional and seasoned, um, planning firm with Verdis. We were conducted, we were, we've paid and conducted surveys, we've had engineered site plans prepared. We have submitted every required document that has been requested. We saw input from every agency and every jurisdiction has responded favorably. We've invested a significant amount of time and resources to do this the right way, because that reflects who we are as business owners, neighbors, and parents. I also want to highlight the positive impact that this project brings to the overall community. This venue would become a flagship for our company, a lifelong dream for us. It would allow us to create a real, sustainable opportunity for local jobs, not just temporary or seasonal work. A full-time venue director, event coordinators, and operational roles, cooks and servers, these are all positions that I can have in my company that keep payroll dollars circulating directly into the local economy. And beyond our team, every wedding or event supports dozens of other local businesses: florists, rental companies, musicians, photographers, hotels, and restaurants. When guests visit this area for a wedding at our place, the economic benefit beyonds far, extends far beyond our property. And now I want to close by directly addressing the findings you must make regarding compatibility, because I understand this is essential to your decision. We believe that the evidence has shown that this proposal is compatible with the surrounding homes, properties, and rural environment. The land has natural buffer. The characteristics are limited, seasonal, and respectful, early quiet hours, and strict The rural zoning allows for non-residential use when the, when they preserve open space and minimize infrastructure. This is exactly what our project does. The impacts that have been mentioned in concerns are fully mitigated through our professional planning or established best practices of operating a business in this community for over 15 years and are site-specific designed. And most importantly, we live here. The compatibility of this use with the surrounding area is directly tied to the fact that we are the ones who will experience it every day. We have every incentive to ensure that it remains respectful, quiet, orderly, and aligned with the rural character that we value. Our home, our children, and our daily life are right here on this property. We are not absentee owners, we are not investors building something for others to manage. We are neighbors, and we care about maintaining the peace, beauty, integrity of this area because we live in it too. Thank you for your time, and thank you for considering our family's request. We appreciate the opportunity to go through this process the right way from the very beginning, and look forward to being a long-term, positive contributor to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I submit his presentation into the record?
Yes, please.
Read into the record as HE 1002.
Anything else from the applicant for now? Do my best, best I can to get through us, uh, get through this in as orderly of a fashion as possible. Again, as I stated, I'm going to do in favor first, and then I think we have at least one person who indicated neutral, so they'll go in the middle, um, and then we'll move on to the opposed. And again, there will be an opportunity for, uh, staff and/or the applicant to comment again after. Um, that said, again, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Um, we'll give you up to three minutes. I do allow some leeway over that if you're, um, making a point and honor roll. So, uh, a buzzer does go off, don't be too flustered. Um, but again, I'm doing this to try to get us through in an, as orderly and judicious, um, as possible. So, um, just going to go with how I have it, uh, on my stack. Um, and if you, um, if you indicated may wish to speak, I'm going to call on you and ask you right now. So first up is Natalie Taylor in favor who may wish to speak. Is there a Natalie Taylor, or Terry, sorry, Natalie Terry? Got the first name wrong. Okay, not seeing a Natalie Terry? Okay. Um, Camille Cupp may wish to speak in favor? All right. That is an, uh, well, we did get a few extra people that wrote, uh, applicant representative, but they may be here in their, um, private capacity as well. Scott Samways, are you with the, okay? Would you like to speak, sir?
He said opposition. And he's speaking.
Okay, yeah, he did mark, you did mark, uh, appellant slash representative. So are you opposed?
I am opposed.
Okay, I'm going to move you to the opposed file. Apologies for that. You're going in the middle of the stack. Sorry about that, sir. Um, do you have Emma Mitchell, who I believe is one, a member of the Mitchell family who may wish to speak? Would you like to speak? No? Okay. And Evelyn Mitchell? Okay. Erica Mitchell?
I'm speaking.
Okay. Ezekiel Mitchell? Do you want to speak? Okay, come on up, sir. Go ahead and state your name and your address for the record.
Hello, my name's Ezekiel Mitchell, 9796 Little Cedar Lane, and I stand for my family in support of this project that we're doing, and, um, do you have my note? Do you have my note? Um, I, I wrote this note, um, just to be, like I said, in support. Knowing my dad, he's owned Mantra for quite a long time now. Moving in our home, we knew it would be a good venue. We did all the legal things to make this dream come true. This dream will be a blessing to This dream will be a blessing to count. I imagine every day what our venue will be used for. Sometimes I wonder what our venue would look like, how big it would be, how many people can fit, and even to walk the venue. But my dad will be so happy if this dream will come true. Thank you.
All right, so another thing, because I do have so many names, I typically read out your name if you indicated you do not wish to speak, but I'm going to do a catch-all at the end of each in favor and opposed and give you one last chance. So I'm going to put those to the side for a second. So you do have several people in favor but do not wish to speak. Robbie Miles in favor may wish to speak.
Mr. Examiner, thank you for your time. I'd like to take a moment to stand in support of the Mitchell Event Center. I'd like to testify to the Mitchells' character more than anything. I've known Tim for thirty-three years now, since we were little kids, and even from the age of seven till now, forty, he might be older than me. He has always been a man of virtue and service. This is evident in all of his business doings, all of the way he runs his company, and most importantly, I think, related to this, is the clients that he takes on. This is especially important given that this is his home, and because of that, I know that the clients that he will bring onto his personal property will be of the highest regard. And so with that, I think the rest has already been stated for the record.
Okay, thank you, sir. Christopher Paul in favor wishes to speak.
Hi, my name's Christopher Paul. I'd like to say that I'm in favor of the Mitchell Event Center. It was stated a little bit earlier ago that there was an amendment due to the concern for fires in the area and how there's only three exit routes. And while I can see how that's a valid concern, I am, one, surprised that that wasn't a concern earlier on in the process, and, two, the amount of exit routes typically for required compliance is three exits. And so while I completely understand the prerogative that was taken there, it is a bit surprising that in this late in the process that that was an amendment. I want to speak real quick to my relationship with the Mitchells. I understand completely that your position requires you to anticipate the problems before anyone else can see them coming. You're often asked to approve projects that may create noise, conflict, tension among neighbors, et cetera, and you're expected to make the choice that protects the community long-term, as anyone in your role would be cautious. That's why this proposal stands out. As it was stated before, there has been enormous lengths that people have gone to to ensure not only compliance but peace and continual good faith and good relationship with the neighbors and the area. I've known the Mitchells for three years now, and I've spent considerable time with them, and I wanted to speak in regards to the level of professionalism, deep care. This is somebody, both Tim and Erica are people that are capable, it's one of their gifts, they're capable of seeing issues before they arise, and they take care of them before they even become a problem. And so, as you heard earlier, there were neighbors that were met with ahead of time, before the property was even purchased. There were different offices that they met with in order to ensure compliance and that this was even a feasible option. And while I understand the concerns of a lot of people in this room, I also want to speak to the fact that I observed on a Facebook post, just honestly, a complete attack on their character. There were so many, there were many people that don't know them from Adam, speaking to their intentions and to their motives. And I hope that there has been a good display of their true character, the fact that these are God-fearing people that love their community.
Thank you, sir. Okay, real quick, oh yeah, there may be some people who are connected on the phone who can hear me now. So one little issue we're going to have here before we unmute the phone. Given our new system, we don't have any way of selecting individuals to speak one at a time. So this may be less of an issue for the in favor. I don't know if you can even see how many people are connected. Okay, we don't know how many people are connected, but I'm going to go ahead and get you unmuted here in one second, and if anyone is in favor and would like to give public testimony, you can go ahead and speak up now, and if there are several of you, we'll figure out an order that you can go in.
I have unmuted the lines, Mr. Examiner.
Okay, the lines are unmuted. Is there anybody on the telephone line who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Okay, all right, we're remuting the telephone. And then this is going to be my final catch-all. I do have some people who signed up. They indicated they're in favor, but they do not wish to speak. So if there's anyone else who's in favor of this application and wishes to speak, please come on up and do so now. Not seeing anyone move? Can we mute the static?
I pulled down the mics.
There we go. All right. I do have one person who wrote neutral and wishes to speak. Believe it's a representative of the water and sewer. Robert, sorry, I can't read your last name.
Steiger. My name is Robert Steiger. I'm speaking in favor for the Greens Ferry Water and Sewer District. It's located 9191 West Michael Avenue in Post Falls. I'm a resident, and my address is 11831 West River View Drive, Post Falls, Idaho. I am on the board and the vice chair of the board for the water company. My concern is that we protect this drinking water for over four hundred people. That's right at the base of that mountain, the Blossom Mountain. What I worry about is having an activity that has two hundred people for a party on the hill, and we are clearly down gradient from that hill. Until such time as they can address the issue of how they're going to handle waste and human waste, I would oppose to have you grant an okay. And that would include getting input from the plan of health people, and the fellow there is Jason Pippen. So the problem with having that much waste, it's going to go downhill in a blob, and we worry that it could foul the water from our water district. So I would ask you, do you hold this okay or change until there is a way, some way to deal with that problem before they okay it? Okay?
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so we are going to move to the opposed, and what I would like to do is have the group representatives come up first. Again, they have up to fifteen minutes. And again, just going in the order that I have them in front of me, we have the group representative of Scott Samway. All right.
Can you speak into the microphone? Okay, I'll move it back.
Oh, yeah, apologies for the record. I'm going to read everyone's name off that is that you're representing. Apologies ahead of time if I get your names wrong. Hopefully you can correct me. Roger Shively and Samway, Alan Honey, Frank Malpara, Madeline David, Gene Ferguson, Jim Brett, Carol Busham, Basham, Greg Basham, and Scott Smith. Okay, thank you, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Hearing Officer. Granrath, Scott Samways, they live at 11335 West Bella Ridge here in Cordillane. So I'd really rather not be here today as I don't really care to intrude in the business of others, but after personally visiting the venue site directly across the property line from my neighbors and seeing the gravel road accessing this venue, I had to come. I'm here to talk about the ingress egress conditions that emergency vehicles and attendees will need to face in the event of a fire, be it a structure or a forest. Being a thirty-year retired fire captain, I feel qualified discussing issues regarding ingress and egress from a fire department perspective. The Mitchells, in applying for a conditional use permit to create an event center in a rural zone, will be creating a hazardous condition for all those that attend these events. They are hoping for twenty-five events per season with up to two hundred individuals per event. With that goal being successful, we can expect five thousand attendees in every six-month season in our quiet rural neighborhood. This is a lot of people to manage with varying characteristics and personalities. This proposed event center is located in a fire zone designated as severe. During a fire incident with a group of two hundred attendees to deal with, ingress and egress will be seriously impacted. People will be scrambling to vacate the venue, running down the long parking lot trail, only to clog up the parking lot and the gravel road leading out of the woods. They will encounter incoming emergency response vehicles trying to make ingress to the emergency, with many spots on the gravel road where an automobile and a fire engine will have extreme difficulty passing each other. I realize this place of assembly is currently slated to be an outdoor venue, but with as many as five thousand people attending per season, there will be many sources of ignition. People smoking cigarettes or who knows what, wherever is convenient. Temporary lighting issues, candles, and other ignition sources in the middle of an area surrounded by brush entries include an older log-style residence and a structure or forest fire is entirely possible. I need to change direction for a moment to talk about ladder fuels and why it doesn't matter if the residence is occupied or not. It's all about those fuel situations and how both the structure and the surrounding vegetation are equally susceptible to combustion. So as I previously mentioned, there could be up to five thousand attendees over the season. Of that group, thousands will be milling around, walking back to the parking lot, wandering off into the woods, and trespassing onto my neighbor's property. This is where fire issues begin. People are not like sheep. Each one has their own thoughts and moods. Some are more careless or deliberate. This is where ladder fuels come into play. Almost all fires require some sort of ladder fuel to progress into a large fire. They start with small flammable materials and ignition source, and then spread into larger materials until that large fire is reached. In wildland areas, sources of ignition could include discarded cigarette butts, marijuana joints, or bong bowls still hot, vape pens with lithium batteries, arson, children playing with matches, downed power lines, or sparks from damaged electrical cords, vehicle-related sources, lightning strikes, and many more. Here's what happens. One of those sources of ignition starts a single blade of dry grass, which grows to a patch of grass. That starts a small bush that in turn starts a larger one that's big enough to reach a hanging tree. This tree takes off and sets fire to two others, then four, then eight, and now you have a forest fire. Add some wind to this remote location, and it is time to call in the fire department with helicopters and fixed-wing air tankers. A residential structure, occupied or not, is just as susceptible as the tree, as both are combustible and unable to move away from the fuel. Some examples of ladder fuels that could cause a structure fire could be any object resting on or near the structure that is easily set afire. Typical fuels in this case could be open piles of paper or trash from the vendors that are in a rush to provide their services, cardboard boxes, used-to-hold paper plates, plastic glasses, silverware, and napkins, bagged trash holding these items after being removed by servers, dumpsters or trash cans that were pushed alongside the structure to get them out of the way, pallets for transporting tables and chairs, and many others. The sources of ignition are the same as in wildfires and act like the blade of grass, spreading to the next level and ending with the dumpster or pallet, creating a structured fire. Where are the fire extinguishers, and have all workers been informed of their whereabouts? Are they all locked up inside the unoccupied building? Is there a fire engine on site? No? Well, time to call 911 for a structure fire as it is now burning up the side of the building and into the eaves. Next is the roof itself, and then the attic space. Will the fire department get there in time to make entry and advance a hose line to the attic access, or is the roof collapsing and setting surrounding trees on fire? These kinds of fires happen, and with twenty-five events scheduled per season, vigilance may not always be a priority. If a fire did involve the residents, the typical fire department response will be two engines, a ladder truck, and a battalion chief. Along with fire department units will be an ambulance, their supervisor, and probably two police vehicles. That makes a minimum ingress response of eight vehicles, three of which will present considerable problems. They'll be traveling up against at least fifty automobiles. More than likely, there will be a vehicle off the road or in an accident, and we can now add a tow truck to this mess. This emergency response will be minimal in number when compared to a wildland fire. This ingress issue with emergency vehicles and all the other problems that come with it is secondary to what I believe to be the biggest issue in this event center proposal. That would be the egress problems when attendees exit Little Cedar Lane from the venue onto Greens Ferry Road. This is where the real problem lies. In the fire department, our first consideration is for life, then property. This is what brought me here today. Unbeknownst to attendees making that exit onto Greens Ferry, a very dangerous situation awaits them. The vast majority of them will be making a right turn onto Greens Ferry, heading north towards town. To their left is a rather steep hill where oncoming vehicles are difficult to see as the crest of the hill blocks the visibility of their presence. The posted speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour, and the distance I paced where the oncoming vehicle's roof became visible was a hundred and twenty yards from Little Cedar Lane. I know a hundred and twenty yards seems like a long way, but at thirty-five miles per hour, that distance closes rapidly. While watching drivers for a while, people that were comfortable with the road, I believe, were driving faster than thirty-five miles per hour. Adding to this will be darkness, as the venues allegedly go until quiet hours, which generally means ten p.m. If attendees begin leaving the venue at ten p.m., there will be people making this dangerous exit around eleven p.m. or later. You see the last ones to go are the ones getting that last drink to go. When I started thinking about this exiting issue and how short the distance to stop was, I decided to do what I will call an awareness drive. On Thursday, November twentieth, I did this awareness drive, going over the hill and heading towards town to see for myself just how hazardous this exit situation really was. I did it twice, once at thirty-five miles per hour and once at forty miles per hour. I'm glad I did, as I was taken by surprise and alarmed at how quickly one would need to react in order to avoid an accident. There is no lighting on Little Cedar Lane, and Thursday was a dark night. It was also compounded by being downhill, and I felt like I'd go into a It was also compounded by being downhill, and I felt like I'd go into a skid if I applied the brakes too hard. If this event center is approved, I am convinced that a serious accident is in our future. With the possibility of fifty vehicles per event and twenty-five events per season, we are looking at one thousand two hundred and fifty vehicles, not counting service vehicles, that will have to exit onto Greens Ferry Road. How many vehicles do you think will be traveling north over the hill on Greens Ferry and towards Little Cedar Lane during this mass exit at ten o'clock? I'm concerned about this situation and urge everyone here to take a moment out of an evening and do your own awareness drive as I did. From town, go south over the hill for about a quarter of a mile on a dark evening. Use a turnaround and head back north on the windy road at the posted twenty-five miles per hour. Pretend or consider you might be a resident in the area familiar with the road, making that last turn on the windy road. You will see the thirty-five miles per hour sign, and the road will straighten out before the top of the hill. Increase your speed to thirty-five miles per hour and drive over the crown, and you will pass Little Cedar Lane on your right. See if you feel if you can stop in time for an exiting attendee. Double back and do it again at forty, a more likely speed for this well-known open road. You still think you could stop in time? So vote yes unless you're concerned about the fire dangers surrounding the center. If you have any reservations about this, as I did, you should vote no. When the accident happens, do you want to have a clear conscience? I will be angry and disappointed, but I'll also know that I have done all I can to expose this problem, and my conscience is going to be clear. Again, I didn't want to be here today, but the firefight in me made me. I'm not usually an unpleasant person, but I promise you that I'll be one of the first to return to ask why, if there ever is a serious accident on what is usually a quiet rural roadway. Thank you for your time hearing my concerns today, and please, do the right thing and vote to deny the Mitchell Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next representative I have is Cynthia Blalock. Okay, and you are going to be representing Teresa or Tavisa Chiati? Sorry. Shane Scribner, Ken Chambers, Roger Tinkie, Tim White, Cara Vrevich, Sean Broker, Gloria Skibble, Ron Skibble, and David Cummings.
That's correct, sir.
Mr. Hearing Officer, quick introduction, David Calan, Community Development Director. When you call out names, it would be helpful if the people would rise so that we can verify that they're actually here.
Okay. Okay, I omitted that part. My apologies. So when I call your name, will you please stand up so that we know you're here? Sorry, again, Teresa or?
Teresa Chiati.
Teresa Chiati, okay, thank you. Shane Scribner, Ken Chambers, Roger Tinkie, Tim White, Cara Vrevich, Sean Broker.
She's speaking separately.
Did you want to speak separately, sir, or? Okay, well, you're not on the other list I have, so are you okay with being a part of this group? Okay. Gloria Skibble?
Gloria Skibby.
Skibby, sorry. Okay, I see that's an I now. And Ron Skibby? Okay, thank you. And David Cummings? All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you go now, but I'm gonna go back and do that with the first group here after you. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Before starting with my prepared, oh, first of all, my name is Cynthia Blalock, and I live at 11059 West Bella Ridge Drive. Before starting with my prepared comments this evening, I would like to reiterate my concern that any limiting of people to three minutes, and I know that may not be what actually occurs, but if it does, I think it's a due process violation. We were all told we would have five minutes to give our comments. People sat down and worked very hard to keep their comments to five minutes, practiced their comments, timed their comments, and if they're not able to, to get their comments in, then I think that deprives them of their due process rights to be meaningfully heard. Just wanted to get that on the record. The applicants are seeking a CUP for a place of assembly, which they have stated will be outdoors. My first objection is that this application does not meet the clear definition set forth in the county code for a place of assembly. Section eight point nine point four zero one of the code states that a place of assembly is, quote, "any building other than a place of worship which is used as a facility for the holding of events, including without limitation, meetings, weddings, wedding receptions, community meetings, and other types of group gatherings. A place of assembly shall be owner occupied unless it is owned by a bona fide charitable, fraternal, benevolent, cultural, religious, or educational organization," close quote. Section eight point five point one one nine of the code provides the building standards for a place of assembly. Thus, there are three separate references in the code where a place of assembly contemplates a building. Nowhere in the code is there any reference to a place of assembly being outdoors. I respectfully disagree with the county staff report, which asserts that section eight point two point ten oh two gives the planning director discretion to determine that this applicant's proposal for an outdoor venue is, quote, "substantially similar to," close quote, "an indoor place of assembly as regulated under sections eight point nine and eight point five." In fact, there is nothing substantially similar to an outdoor use and an indoor use. With an indoor use, fire ignition sources are limited and any fire is contained, at least in its initial stages, and noise is contained. On the other hand, an outdoor venue in a heavily forested area with dry brush, with noisy generators providing power, and with music blaring over loudspeakers, is hardly a lesser intensity land use. And I would argue that it actually constitutes a more intensive use of the land. Applicants don't have a building they plan on using for their place of assembly, and accordingly, this CUP should be denied. I would also like to mention the September twenty twenty-five memorandum decision and order issued by the First Judicial District in the Johnson versus Bonner County Administrative Appeal. Case number on that is CV zero nine dash twenty-four dash ten thirty-eight. While I realize a district court case does not constitute precedent for the matter before this tribunal, it is the court to which any appeal of this matter would be taken. And it did point out that the Bonner County Commissioner's reversible error in mischaracterizing the category of the proposed use for the CUP being sought in that case. The CUP before this tribunable, tribunal, excuse me, is being characterized as a place of assembly, and I believe the Bonner County case would be instructive if this matter ends up before the First Judicial District. My second objection relates to the West Little Cedar Lane easement. The easement over which potential event guests and staff must travel does not contemplate or allow for commercial use. The easement is governed by a document executed in November of the year two thousand, and that's very important, entitled Road Maintenance Agreement and Dedication and Grants of Easement, recorded with the county as document number one six five five eight four eight. Now, I realize that applicant's attorney, John Magnuson, rendered an opinion that this document does not prohibit commercial use of the easement road. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Magnuson. As you know, fundamental rules of contract interpretation dictate when there is any ambiguity in the written terms of an agreement, effect must be given to the party's intent inferred from the language and the context. Sections three, four, five, six, eight, and nine of the easement document all refer to the Cedar Lane easement as a private road. In opining that the easement document does not prohibit commercial use of the private road, Mr. Magnuson apparently ignored section eleven of the document, which addresses maintenance standards of the private easement. It specifies if there is a dispute regarding the necessity of repairs or maintenance to the easement, the matter shall be submitted to binding arbitration, and the standard to be applied by the arbitrator is, quote, "whether the subject road segment complies with the minimum fire district standards for access roadways to residential properties that are currently adopted by the fire districts of Cootney County," close quote. Indeed, a copy of the then-current minimum requirements for access roadways to residential properties was attached and recorded as Exhibit H to the easement document. This demonstrates the drafter's intent that the easement road was intended for residential and not commercial use. Furthermore, section thirteen point oh eight of the Cootney County ordinances that were operative in two thousand, when the easement was executed, outlined potential conditional uses in rural zones, but did not include places of assembly, event venues, or wedding venues. In fact, those three terms were not even defined in the codes in effect in two thousand. Thus, Mr. and Mrs. Lindauer, the original grantors of the easement, could not have contemplated or intended the commercial use of the easement for which applicants advocate today. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
May I submit my written comments for the record?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Read into the record is AG one thousand and three.
Okay, and I'm gonna go back to the first group real quick and do another little roll call. Roger Shively. Anne Samway. Alan Honey?
Honi.
Honi. Name pronunciation's not my strong suit. Frank Malpara. Okay. Madeline David. Jean Ferguson. Jim Brett. Carol Busham. Basham. You already told me that. And Greg Basham. Scott Smith. All right, thank you. All right, we have our third representative group. I'm not sure what that letter is. Mr. or Mrs. Weeks, Jonico? Jonica Weeks. Okay, all right. And as you make your way up here, I'm gonna do the same thing. Rodney Weeks. Tim White. Bailey White. Dustin Weeks. Ashley Weeks. Cindy Sorensen. Scott Sorensen. Mark? Not even sure what that first letter is.
Plowman?
Plowman. That's a P. Mark Plowman, okay. Jeremy Walmsley. And Chris Downard? Okay, thank you very much. All right, Ms. Weeks.
Hi there.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Say thank you for giving me the time this evening, Mr. Examiner and staff. My name is Jonica Weeks, and first off, I'm a proud U.S. citizen, and I appreciate that I'm afforded many blessings granted to me in our federal constitution, including afforded the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I'm also a proud taxpaying citizen of Cootney County. I'm also proud of being a mother and a wife of two wildland firefighters. My husband of thirty-eight years retired as a U.S. Forest Service Wildland firefighter and Type Two Incident Commander of thirty-seven years. He now is in the Wildland Fire Investigations Field for the state of Idaho. My son, who also is attending this evening, has been a wildland firefighter for the state of Idaho for nearly a decade and is specialized in helicopter heliattack suppression, engine boss ground initial attack operations, and nearly everything to do with fire, including always striving to keep his crews safe and able to go home to their families. I live at twenty-eight thirty-six South Greens Ferry Road, at the corner of Little Cedar Lane, otherwise known to us as Arrow Road. We are located at what I've been referring to since late October when I received the letter in the mail about this proposed venue. Our home is now ground zero. We've lived here for twenty-five years, raised three boys, and hope to help raise our grandbabies as well. We own twenty-one acres, twenty point nine five to be exact, and Little Cedar Lane, approximately one mile in length, because the proposed venue site is at the end of the road, which is a dead end. We own approximately two-thirds of the road going through our property. Little Cedar Lane's within a hundred feet of two and a half sides of our home. Again, one hundred feet, one area at ninety feet. We purchased this property because it is a rural zone. There are no places of assembly, including event venues, were allowed at all. This proposed, this proposal seems to me to be similar to an eminent domain situation, attempting to be taken over by another Cootney County citizen. It's not only similar to a land grab, it's similar to a home and property invasion to us. It's a very real feeling. Two hundred guests coming in and out of our property up to twenty-five times per year, which means every weekend, every weekend, between either the first of April to the first of September, or mid-April, April to the middle of October, two hundred people, not including all the service and staff needed at the date of the venue, but also the pre and post folks that need to come in and go out for the upcoming and previous venue activities. So a little bit more about us, we're hardy, and that's why we desired this type of land. This is why we work our property. We mitigate fire danger with upwards of two hundred hours per year. Raking, pruning, burning are a norm for us. Again, raking, pruning, burning are a norm. We take fire danger extremely seriously. These activities include loud, dirty work that will not be conducive with the applicant's customers. We operate chainsaws, blowers, weed eaters, riding lawnmowers. We also keep our guns maintained and ready for hunting season and for potential folks that may choose to enter our home uninvited. We target shoot you around, and I'm guessing that the applicant's brides and grooms would appreciate, would not appreciate exchanging vows to loud gunshots and occasionally louder music we enjoy. I've been in marketing for over thirty years, have been a small business owner for over fifteen. In my experience, good customer service and customer expectations are what has made me a successful businesswoman. Wedding vow, wedding venue guests, I presume will not be expecting these loud activities happening during what is supposed to be one of those memorable days of their life. Fires in our area, and I have this document that I would like to give on the record when I'm done. Fires in our area, this is a map showing seven miles to the west of the proposed venue location, and five miles to the east, and four miles to the north, ranging from twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-five. This is an Idaho Department of Lands official map that was put together on request, and it's been customized to include only our south of the river area by the Idaho Department of Lands. Twenty-one fires, including the Highland Fire in twenty-twenty-one. That was human caused, which most of these on the map are. The Highland Fire is very close to what the proposed venue location is, one ridge over, and one of my family members was involved with suppression and investigation of that fire. And the scary part about that fire is, had it not been suppressed so quickly, it would have potentially gone down into the sundown ridges states, which is right above the venue site with multiple homes. And they have one ingress, one egress as well. It also includes the very scary Parkway Fire at Quinone Park back in twenty-twenty-three. I was down there and viewed up to eight aircraft in the sky combating that fire, which was an amazing, incredible sight and very dangerous for all the pilots and the folks on the ground. Thankfully, it was suppressed without loss of life or harms, and that was due directly to the air attack planes and helicopters that were diverted from the very active Ridge Creek Fire in Hayden. They moved those aircraft directly to Parkway, and that's why the fire was contained as quickly as it was. There was a lot of acreage lost, however, no loss of life or homes. There was a lot of acreage lost, however, no loss of life or homes. And that fire was started human caused as well. So I'm going to go on to a little bit about what a RELE is. A RELE is an acronym that stands for a Wildland Urban Interface. It's an Idaho State designation of areas that are at a high risk of injury and death from wildfire danger due to the inclusion of urban dwellings and humans living within a high fire risk area. This proposed venue is located in a Kootenay County designated RELE zone. Why is that significant? Because this wedding venue proposal is definitely in the area of high fire risk. This Cup request is attempting to ignore the natural state of the land and its steep and heavily forested topography. This Cup request is ignoring the high fire risk Kootenay County designation and is still trying to get it approved. And it is ignoring the fact that the Cup is not conducive with providing the basic safety for its thousands of proposed guests annually celebrating the highest, in the highest fire danger months of the year. I'd like now to address Mr. Archer's letter regarding the fire, International Fire Code analysis that he did on the road. His letter was dated September 10th of 2024 and was addressed to Ms. Stephanie Blairick. This is one quote that I would like to focus on. He states in this letter, quote, "There are two noticeable pinch points that will be allowed at the current width." Pinch points, this is firefighters speak, and refers to areas too narrow to constitute safe roadway width for firefighters, safe suppression activities. What is the pinch point? Officially, as defined by the U.S. Forest Service, fire pinch points are dangerous locations that should be avoided by firefighters and the public during a wildfire. Why pinch points are dangerous? One, limited escape routes. Pinch points are dangerous because they often lack clear escape routes, making it difficult to escape the fire. Number two, increased fire behavior, and fire does have noticeable and predictable behavior. It is a science in and of itself. So the increased fire behavior, pinch points can also intensify fire behavior due to the limited space, potentially creating more extreme conditions for firefighters to battle. Here's some key concepts as designated by the U.S. Forest Service mandatory safety protocols. These are mandatory. Key concepts, pinch points slash caught between hazards. These are locations where firefighters could become trapped by fire due to terrain, changing fire behavior, or limited access egress points, i.e. Little Cedar Lane, one way in, one way out. Another key concept is escape routes. Escape routes are pre-planned for firefighters. They train for years, learning these techniques. They work with other firefighters. There's a lot of fire folks and EMS folks in this room might agree with. Escape routes are pre-planned for firefighters, but for wedding venue guests, no escape routes. The second key concept regarding pinch points are safety zones. These are pre-identified areas where a firefighter can survive a fire without a fire shelter. As for wedding guests, no pre-identified areas. What if no safety route exists? As defined by the United States Department of Agriculture, U.S. Forest Service, if a safety dome doesn't exist, it's called an entrapment, as defined by the U.S. Forest Service. What is an entrapment? It occurs when fire behavior unexpectedly changes and personnel cannot reach a safety zone because escape routes are absent, inadequate, or blocked. And finally, these safety protocols are mandatory for firefighters, and I'm quoting this, and are based on the 10 standard firefighter orders and 18 watchout situations. These are foundational documents for wildland fire safety, but for wedding guests, no such safety protocols exist. Allowing this venue with the two identified pinch points by Mr. Archer in writing is welcoming thousands of innocent civilians to gather in a location where, if a fire breaks out, they may not even get the opportunity to attend another wedding. The pinch points will cause the suppression personnel to stand down and let the fire burn over the pinch points before entering the venue site altogether. That's the way it's done. So thanks to Mr. Archer's letter, we have yet another reason to request this Cup's denial. Fire danger is real, and people die when there are areas of obstruction, no escape routes, and no safety zones. The proposed Mitchell Event Center located in our rural zone at 9796 Little Cedar Lane is a proposal with no regard for the safety of its invited guests, its staff members, its neighbors, structural firefighters, its wildland firefighters, EMS, and Sheriff's Department personnel. I respectfully request that this Cup be denied. Kootenay County citizens have the right to attend events, gather, and go to work with the presumption that they will be able to return home to their loved ones. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll take your papers.
Did you want to submit, did you want to submit that map and we'll put it in the record?
Thank you. Read into the record is HE 1004.
Okay, I'm not going to remember everybody's name on the list, but if we happen to have gotten you, and I'm going to read your name out, but you were on the list as represented, I would ask that you be honest about that and stick with your decision to be represented by one of the speakers, but hopefully we didn't do that. So again, going just from the top of the list, Nancy Steffen. Yes, we, we're going to, is that something that we can get in the record if it's a...
Yes, and I have it written for the record.
Okay, well, we'll take the photo then after, if you would like. And if you can set it up for me to take a look at right now, you can show others after. But again, I ask that you direct your testimony to me, please.
Yeah. My name, thank you, Hearing Director, or Commissioner. My name is Nancy Steffen. I live at 10417 West Carrera Lane in the Bella Ridge Development.
Can you get that mic a little more in front of you for the people in the back?
My name is Nancy Steffen. I live at 10417 West Carrera Lane in the Bella Ridge Development, right across the street. And I would like to speak about some of the claims on the vertus narrative. The first, because most of the things that are being claimed here are opinions and speculation. There's no impact reports, wildfire impact reports, traffic impact reports. So I'd just like to address a few things that are claimed. The first one being that there's a much needed, or a much need for this venue. As you can see on the left of this poster board, I started researching event menus, and by the way, event venues, and by the way, I'm a retired event planner, caterer, florist, and I worked with different charities for 45 years doing events like this, and I presently work with the Three Seas Charity of Coeur d'Alene, and have done many events at the hotel and different centers. So as you can see, I, when I started researching these events, in the 83814 and 83815 area code, I had to stop at like 50-something because it was just too many 2%. And so what I did is I narrowed it down from occupancy, so there's a wide range of occupancy, distance from this proposed site, the different types of venues, from elegant to rustic, parks, et cetera. And so I narrowed it down to the 27 that I've displayed here. So I would like to rebut the fact that there is a much-needed venue here. The second thing I would like to address is that it does not place additional demands on infrastructure or services. I, I am going to address, again, no traffic impact studies, no ecological impact studies, wildfire studies to support these opinions and their, their opinions. The measure, the, just with the 25 events, if they were to stick to that, is going to increase traffic on our Spokane leading into Riverview, two-lane road, Riverview, two-lane road, Greens Ferry, two-lane road, up to Cedar, which is a 12-to-15-foot road presently. And when someone had said, it's, you can't, you can only go in or you can only come out, but you can't have traffic going both ways at any given time. So the, the impact on the roads just with traffic, and so therefore, I also, upriver leading into Riverview would also be impacted. And I would like to comment, even though I wasn't going to, with the fire, with the fire issues that have been brought up, it's not just the 200 guests that would be trapped, it's also all the surrounding neighbors, because none of us would be able to get off, get out of these two-lane roads. I mean, it would be, it would, it would be a disaster. So in the 25 events a year, on the vertus narrative, it's estimated that it would be 25 events a year. So I would like to ask you, what would prevent them from expanding to 365 events a year? I have been in situations with a resort where they bus reset a table for 300 guests in a matter of an hour. So I, on this, on the thing that I will submit, there's a minimal potential and maximum potential for traffic and the impacts on the roads. And now I'd like to address the parking issue. The applicant claims that they're only providing 51 parking places for 200 guest venues. I don't know how that math adds up, but that, and it stated that the other 150 guests will be shuttled, and I'd like to know where they're going to be shuttled from. There are no public roads there. Greens Ferry has no shoulders. People can't park there. Bella Ridge is a private commu, or a private community. They can't park there. Where exactly will they be parking? Where will they be shuttled from? Quinlan Park? Quinlan Park in the middle of the summer is super, super busy. So that's a question I have for you. I'd like to address the comments in Sections 1, 3, 4, and 6 with the comments that they made. These are, these are opinions, that it's protecting residential character, aligns with Kootenay goals, or preserving open spaces, serves public interest. It serves two people, the Mitchells and Sandy Young. That's it. It doesn't serve anybody else's interest. We're all taxpayers, too. We all have, you know, are going to be affected by this. Everybody in this mountain is going to be affected either by traffic or noise or all the things that have been listed already. So community engagement, meaningful public and economic value, it's only a value to the developer and the Mitchells. Okay, and the last thing I'd like to address, the fact that these are subject, these are subjective, they're opinions. There's no studies, there's no traffic reports, there's no facts, it's just all opinions. And it all sounds really good, but there are real issues here. And I'd like to ask you, how are porta-potties and noise 10 to 12 hours a day, artificial light pollution, additional litter, wear on our roads, potential fire dangers, tearing down streets in order to erect a parking lot, infiltr, trees, not streets, infiltrating the neighborhood? How is this preserving and protecting the character of our rural residential neighborhood? I mean, it's a, it's a valid question. And then one last thing I would like to say is that the Mitchells have already stated that they plan on dividing their property. So if that is the case, why can't they go buy a property to, in a commercially zoned business area to conduct their catering businesses? Why, why do they have to do it in a neighborhood? If they sold this land to a developer, their 20 that they divide, that would bring untold revenue to Kootenay County with homes and property tax values. So I urge you to vote against this for the sake of all the taxpayers, not just for the benefit of one. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Paul Steffen.
Let me read that into the record. What do I call that? Read into the record is HE 1005. And we'll get a picture of that.
There's a picture of that in there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'm just going to read through this, so it's...
Okay, state your, state your name before you start, please.
My name's Paul Steffen, 10417 West Carrera Lane, in Coeur d'Alene. My wife Nancy and I are owners of a couple of properties in Bella Ridge Development where we also live. My purpose here is to show what is intended use of the easement, as is created in the road maintenance agreement and dedication grants of easement document 1655-848, and whether the applicant has the right to use the easement to allow public access to a commercial venture on the subject property. Page 1, Section 4 of that document states, "It is the intent and desire of Lindauer that the use of the maintenance of the said private road on Parcells A, B, C, and E shall be for the joint benefit and joint obligation of the owners." Here it is clearly stated that the intent for the easement is to create a private road for the joint benefit and obligation of the other property owners. The specific words "private road" are repeatedly used in the document 1655-848 over 20 times, and the sister document 49 also repeated multiple times. Here is what I found regarding private road in Kootenay County. In Kootenay County, a private road is defined as a road that is owned by an individual, organization, or group of property owners and not maintained by any public highway, district, or government entity. A common access easement does not automatically allow commercial use, as scope of use is determined by the easement document and its legal purpose. An easement granted for residential use cannot evolve into a commercial use without a new agreement or legal action. Public access thereof, private roads are generally not open for public use, and unauthorized use may be considered trespassing. Until last week, there were signs posted at this subject private road entrance at Greens Ferry Road, private property, no trespassing, which seemed to ratify that intent. Page 4, Section 9C, "Each owner shall be respectful of the other party's privacy and personal property rights and their use of the private road." In this section, it is shown how that grant of access of the private road is to be used or treated by each owner, with each owner instructed to respect the privacy and personal property rights of the other owners. It is pretty obvious that allowing several hundred cars, people, ingress, egress access over a single-track road on any given day, said single-track road which winds through all the other owners' properties, then gathered those people in an outdoor venue adjacent to those properties cannot meet this instruction with respect to privacy or property right protection for those owners living in this rural zone. Page 3, Section 8C, "The easements provided for in this paragraph 8 shall be limited to accessing Parcel D for agricultural and recreational purposes only and shall not be used for residential uses nor to access any residential structures located on Parcel D." This section shows further intent, that it limits the usage of the easement for Parcel D to the only other two listed intended uses, those agricultural and recreational purposes, because the primary intended use for the easement for residential access for Parcel D is not needed by them due to a separate residential access entirely on their own land, nor desired due to the additional maintenance cost burden. Page 4, Section 9D, "No owner of any parcel or property described herein shall place any obstruction across or on the private road which will interfere with the continued use of said private road." It's hard to imagine the impact to the residences on their ability to ingress and egress on a single-lane private road during an event with hundreds of people, cars utilizing the road, and perhaps even parking on it. Page 4, 9D, "In an event of two-thirds of the owners agree to change the easement provisions or restrictions, two-thirds of the owners must agree." And on page 8, 14 modifications, "No modification here shall be valid unless in writing executed by all then-current owners of the real property described herein and recorded with the County Recorder Office for the county of Kootenay, state of Idaho. Changes must be formally documented and executed by agreement of all other owners. It is clear from the tone, language, and language of Document 1655-848 that the intended use for the easement is as a private road, jointly beneficial to all owners for residential purposes primarily, with additional exceptions made for agricultural or recreational purposes only, while protecting the property and privacy rights of all. That being the case, the applicant cannot arbitrarily change the use of the easement for his own private benefit, i.e. the proposed commercial use event center, while infringing on the rights of the other owners without either arbitration, as described in Document 1655-848, Section 11A, or by gaining two-thirds consent of the other owners to change restrictions. Since that is not done, the applicant does not have the legal authority to use the road for his own public commercial purposes. For those reasons, I respectfully request that the application for the CUP 25 to 208 be denied."
Okay, thank you, sir.
Read into the record is HE 1006. Thank you.
Cynthia Blaylock?
I already said.
Oh, okay. I was gonna, that's why I looked at it twice. It's like, I recognize that name, okay. Thank you for being honest, although I would, I would have recognized you. Laura Malpara? Okay, go up, come on up.
Hello. My name is Laura Malpara and I live at 922 Marcus Drive in Bella Ridge Development. My husband Frank and I have lived in Bella Ridge for about 15 years now, a little more than that. And what drew us to that beautiful area was the fact that it was a quiet rural setting. And we fear that that will be threatened by the addition of the Mitchell Event Center being in such close proximity to our neighborhood. There are many reasons we feel it should not be approved and we are here in opposition to the proposed Mitchell Event Center CUP. My main focus tonight, though, is to give a voice to those who can't speak for themselves, namely the abundant wildlife that resides around the planned venue. We're blessed to live amongst deer, elk, moose, cougar, fox, turkeys, quail, owl, myriad other critters. We want to bring up some issues that we think could very well negatively impact our furry and feathered neighbors if the venue is approved. Probably the most impactful will be the increased traffic flow during the event's operating season. We are told that the center may host up to 25 events a season with 200 guests at each event, which will add thousands of vehicles entering and leaving our area during that time. Riverview and Greens Ferry are the main access entering and leaving our area and are both winding, dark, and narrow roads with little to no shoulder space. Increased traffic during the late afternoon and early evening, the animals' peak feeding, foraging, hunting, and mating times coincide with event activity. The animals roam freely across our roads at all times of the day, but significantly increase during the late afternoon on into the evening hours. Departing partygoers who may have had a few drinks before getting on the road and whose reflexes may be impaired create a very dangerous scenario for themselves as well as the wildlife that unexpectedly, though frequently dash across those roads. Also important to consider are the noise and light pollution, unavoidable in this type of venue. At its worst, brightest, and loudest, we can assume that not only will it disturb neighbors, it will also significantly impact, or yeah, impact our wildlife, disrupting the natural behaviors of the animals, making them more vulnerable and impacting their overall health and survival. And the fire danger inevitably goes up as well with the added cars and people, many who may be smokers. The thought of a fire breaking out in our area is so frightening and devastating for all of us and would be catastrophic for the wildlife and their habitat. Speaking of increased fire risk, on a slightly different but related topic, if the Mitchell Event Center becomes a reality, we thought it would be worth mentioning that homeowner insurance premiums very possibly would be increased. Now, we can't say for sure that they would increase as each insurance company has its own risk assessment methods, but they all consider fire risk factors and developing their rates. Activities like smoking, temporary structures, higher density of people and vehicles introduce new man-made ignition sources closer to our homes in an area already prone to fire. Also, insurance companies often view proximity to a commercial property differently than to another home. If the venue is considered a higher fire risk commercial property, its closeness could raise exposure to deer my structures. In rural fire prone areas, insurers use sophisticated models to calculate wildfire risk. The development of the venue could potentially change the risk models of our specific geographic area, especially if it's seen as increasing traffic and/or activity in a vulnerable zone. FYI, my husband and I have had our homeowner insurance canceled in the last few years because we're already living in what is considered to be a high fire risk area. In general, Idahoans are facing more challenges in obtaining fire insurance due to areas' increased wildfire risk, stricter underwriting practices, and a reduction in the number of insurance carriers willing to provide coverage. For these reasons and the others brought up by those at the meeting tonight, we respectfully ask the hearing examiner not recommend the approval of the Mitchell Event Center CUP. Thanks for your opportunity to talk tonight.
Thank you ma'am.
May I put this in the record? Read into the record is HE 1007.
Good evening. My name is Jim Blaylock and I live at 11059 West Bella Ridge Drive, which is directly across from Greens Ferry from the proposed event site. I would like to contrast the numbers of comments in support and in opposition to the CUP as well as the relevance of those pro and con comments. I have this chart right here that summarizes the nine comments filed in support of the CUP as of 4:00 PM on November 24th. In contrast, there were 143 opposition comments filed by the same date. If you review the nine letters of support that have been filed in support of applicant's CUP, you will see that two of them were provided by employees of applicant's catering company, Mongia Catering. That would be Mr. Lever and Mr. Ruder. With one exception, all people filing comments in support live between one and a half miles and over 2,000 miles away from the proposed venue's site. The only individual who lives close to the venue's site is the aforementioned Mr. Lever. He lives on property owned by Redfern LLC, which is owned by Sandra Young, who is the president and CEO of Verdis, who represents the applicants in this process. The letters of support contain statements attesting to the Mitchell's good character and catering expertise. However, none of those letters provide any facts supporting conclusory statements that the venue is needed in the area or that it will have no negative impact on the neighborhood. On the other hand, the comments filed in opposition to the CUP and the majority of the speakers you will hear tonight are property owners who live in the immediate proximity to the proposed site and all of whom address the incompatibility of this project with the rural character of our neighborhood. Before coming here this evening, I checked the county's website and noticed there were additional comments filed after the November 24th deadline. 14 of those comments were in opposition to the CUP and 13 were in favor. However, true to form, not a single one of the pro comments live in the immediate area. Some of them didn't even list their address and they include support from more, include support from more Mongia Catering employees and even a relative. Most alarming, many, many were submitted to the county via Verdis, which demonstrates an orchestrated and paid effort to overcome the original 143 comments in opposition to this project. I would simply ask, sir, that when you review the paltry number of letters in support and compare them to the overwhelming number of objections from actual neighbors, raising relevant concerns that you assign more weight to comments of the people who are not employed by the applicants but who live close to the event site and will be negatively impacted by its operations. Finally, I would like to, like it noted that the county's process in this case did not provide adequate notice and a meaningful opportunity to be heard to the surrounding neighbors. While applicants did comply with the notice provision set forth in the county code, there are two "no trespassing" private property signs posted at the easement road. One of them immediately after the one, excuse me, one of them immediately after one turns onto it from Greens Ferry. In a state where rural property owners are fiercely protective of their private property and their gun rights, I certainly wasn't comfortable driving down that private easement road and I have heard many, but my neighbors say they weren't comfortable driving down the easement either. Thus, while applicants complied with the letter of the law, they certainly did or did not comply with the spirit of the law. One could easily, could reasonably argue that they didn't really want neighbors to see the proposed site. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you sir.
I have some documents to give you here.
If you'd like them submitted, please bring them on up.
Hi, my name is Naomi Shively. And my husband Roger and I live just 1,700 feet from Greens Ferry Road and less than a quarter of a mile from the turnoff to the proposed location of the event center. And I am here this evening to specifically request that this cup be denied. The request is not about opposing growth. It's about protecting the clear intent of rural zoning and the safety, security, and character it's designed to preserve. Cootney County's rural zone exists to protect residential living, agricultural uses, forestry, open space, and quiet enjoyment of property. The proposal before you does not represent a small exception. It contradicts the purpose of rural zoning. What defines life in our part of Cootney County today is the absence of commercial enterprise. That absence is exactly what makes our area safe, quiet, neighborly, and rural. There is no commercial traffic, no business lighting, no amplified business sounds. We also, in our area, share something very important, which is community. We know one another, we help one another. When someone slides off the road in winter, neighbors stop. When there's a medical emergency, meal trains appear. That culture exists because this is a residential area, rural neighborhood, not a commercial destination. That will fundamentally change if this cup is approved. The proposal, as others have said, allows for thousands of visitors each season entering a road system never divined, designed for commercial traffic. The impacts are not speculative, they are predictable. Noise from outdoor voices, DJs, amplified music, and crowd activity will carry across open terrain. Late night departures will be car doors slamming, yelling, headlights sweeping across homes, and traffic surges well after dark. Lighting required for events and parking will permanently break our dark sky conditions. Traffic congestion will create backups on Greens Ferry and Riverview, making it difficult for residents to leave or return home during events, particularly arrival and departure times. Emergency response will be strained. Fire, EMS, and sheriff services will be affected by higher traffic density and crowd activities in a wildfire prone area. Parking overflow and trespassing will become unavoidable. As was mentioned by another speaker, the amount of parking planned is not enough. Guests unfamiliar with the area will park on private roads, block driveways, and trespass onto neighboring land. These impacts would not occur occasionally. They repeat with every event, week after week, season after season. What today is a quiet rural neighborhood becomes a commercial activity zone with residents really trapped inside it. Equally important is what happens to community culture. Event centers bring large numbers of people who do not know the local norms, have no relationship with surrounding residents, and no stake in the long-term character of the neighborhood. The social fabric shifts from a place where people look out for one another to a place where strangers cycle through in party oriented mindsets. That change is permanent. There is also a wider planning consequence. Adding a cup of this scale in our rural zone sets a powerful precedent. Once this happens, future denials become far more difficult to justify. The domino effect is real. One commercial venue becomes two, then three, and gradually the rural identity of, and this zoning district is meant to protect is lost. And it's not by accident, but by incremental approval. Rural zoning is not a placeholder for future commercialization. It's a promise to residents that low intensity use, safety, and quiet enjoyment will be protected. So this proposal introduces noise, traffic, lighting, congestion, emergency strain, and public safety risks into an area that was never intended to absorb them. It is incompatible with rural zoning, unworkable for surrounding infrastructure, and destructive to the safety and culture of our neighborhood. We're not opposing growth. We are asking you to uphold protections that rural zoning is meant to protect. For these reasons, we respectfully ask that this cup be denied. Thank you for your time and your careful consideration.
Thank you ma'am.
Test, test?
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Steve Tanner. I live at 2596 South Greens Ferry Road, Coral Lane, Idaho. First thing I wanted to do is acknowledge county planner Joseph Foudy. Joseph has been, in my opinion, really accessible. He returns phone calls very quickly and he's an excellent employee as far as I'm concerned.
He was out of the room when he got the compliments.
Okay, right. Okay. My wife and I own and live on the land bordering the Mitchell property and our property line is about 100 feet away from where this venue and parking lot would be built. The private road to the event center runs across a portion of our property with an easement. We also own a house on Little Cedar Lane. The first time we found out about this event center going in was a few weeks ago when we got the notice of this public hearing. Our land is mostly forested and we're enrolled in the forest stewardship program through the Idaho Department of Lands. We actively manage our forest and periodically harvest trees for income. The last commercial timber sale was in 2020. At that time, we were encouraged by a forester with IDL to install a fuel break around our property because of our property, as well as all the surrounding properties are in a wildland urban interface and a risk of wildfire. According to the county comprehensive plan, the number one hazard risk facing Cootney County is wildfire. Subsequently, we installed about 4,200 feet of fuel break around the property to help save our forest should a wildfire come through. When we're not harvesting trees, we take, trees to take to the mill, we're maintaining the fuel break, thinning the forest of dead and dying trees, cutting firewood, and burning slash when conditions allow. Our primary staging area for this activity is about 150 feet from the event location. We use chainsaws, run log splitters and other equipment, and this work can last all day. This activity is protected under the rights to conduct forest practices in Idaho statutes, so I'm not worried about someone shutting us down. What I am worried about is up to 200 outsiders who are not familiar with wildfire risk in the area coming through our property to attend an event in the middle of the summer and accidentally starting a fire. The access road for the subject property, Little Cedar Lane, is governed by a road agreement that was created in, in 2000 when the developer subdivided his property in large parcels. We are part of that agreement. The Mitchell's legal counsel provided the opinion that since the road agreement does not specifically prohibit the use of the road for a commercial resort, it would be allowed. The agreement also indicates the threat resort, it would be allowed. The agreement also indicates the three users can have invited guests use the road. So their legal counsel reasons this would allow the Mitchells to have two hundred guests at a time cross our property to attend an event twenty-five times a year between spring and fall. My wife and I respectfully disagree with these opinions. Looking at the circumstances surrounding the drafting of the road agreement, we believe this was not the original intent of the agreement. The road agreement also specifies the three users, including the Mitchells, are responsible for sharing the maintenance. The cost and responsibility of the maintenance is based on where your property is located on the road, not how much you use the road. Therefore, the majority of the maintenance costs associated with the increased use from this event center would fall on ourselves and the other user, not the Mitchells, who will be generating the bulk of the traffic by using their property in a manner not anticipated by the road agreement. We object to sharing the road with the event center for three reasons. First, it would interfere with our ability to work our forest along the road, skidding and cutting trees, and to easily access our property during an event. Secondly, it would impact the inhabitants of our rental house, which is on Little Cedar Lane just off South Greens Ferry Road, and with traffic, noise, and car lights. And thirdly, it would require us to pay for the maintenance of a road intended for use as an access to three rural residential lots that would now be used for access by up to two hundred people and untold numbers of service vehicles associated with events on the property. The Cootney County Land Use and Development Code specifies that several conditions need to be meant for a CUP in rural, in a rural zone. We believe this proposal falls short of the, in the following ways. The proposal is not compatible with the natural characteristics of this area. The surrounding land is all single-family residences, many on large forested acreages. There's no commercial uses in this area other than forestry. The proposal does not adequately address the hazards and economic impacts associated, associated with this event center. We have ser- serious concerns for life and property from fire. The one-way, mile-long, narrow road is not adequate to quickly enter and exit a venue in the event of a fire. We also have serious concerns about pollutants from stormwater from the venue and the construction of a parking lot running to, onto our property and into Cedar Creek, which runs down into the Spokane River. And finally, it has been stated in the goals and the policy of the comprehensive plan to limit, to plan and limit development in hazardous areas in a way that considers the natural and man-made conditions, those areas, in a way that considers the natural and man-made conditions of those areas and maximizes the health and safety of the residences while minimizing the risk and damage of loss of property. This event center does not appear to meet that goal. My wife and I respectfully request the county commissioners to deny the conditional use permit. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Read into the record is HE 1010, and I'm going to read in Scott Shamway's document as HE 1011.
Okay. I believe we've got Roy Ely or something along those lines.
It's Roy.
Okay.
Yeah. So my name is Roy Ely, and I, my husband and I live at our property on Greens Ferry Road, 2596 South Greens Ferry Road, and we've been there for thirty-eight years. As Steve just said, our property is adjacent to the proposed wedding venue approximately, our eastern border is approximately a hundred feet from the venue site, and I'm speaking in, today in oppositions to the event center conditional use. We have several, several severe concerns, as people have said over and over again, but it doesn't, it bears repeating. This development is endangering the peaceful rural environment of our neighborhood. Twenty-five events a year with up to two hundred attendees potentially brings an incalculable amount of noise, traffic, litter, and congestion to this quiet part of North Idaho, which has never known commercial activity of this sort. Secondly, obviously, we are horrified to think of the danger posed by guests arriving in a forested area with questionable monitoring of matches, cigarettes, or potential fire risks. There is no water available at the venue, which means that a fire truck responding to a fire would be limited to the water it carries on the truck, which could be expended quickly and then have to be refilled. There is only one road for ingress and egress to this site, which means that guests who might be fleeing a fire event would be competing on a narrow, winding, unlit dirt road with any fire trucks who are responding to the alarm. When the venue site, the, the road from the parking lot to the venue site is approximately seven hundred feet, and I would believe that if you were a smoker and you park your car and you're walking up seven hundred feet to the venue, it's just the right time to have a cigarette, and I worry about, you know, sparks and cigarette butts and that sort of thing going on, so it just is, it's a huge issue. Thirdly, we're concerned about Little Cedar Road. Can it handle the kind of equipment that is necessary to do the construction that they have proposed? How is this private road going to be maintained and by whom? We're concerned about attendings, attendees arriving at a site with only forty parking spots and possibly further complicating road access by having overflow parking on the road. And this is to say nothing of the noise, dust, and visual impact on the homes right next to Little Cedar Lane, with days of preparation before the event, then the event itself, and then traffic cleanup for after, after the event. Fourthly, we're concerned about the increase of traffic on Greens Ferry Road, which already struggles with drivers who speed through this rural area way too fast. Additional traffic on Greens Ferry, plus the roads turning onto and off of Little Cedar, after dark, after an event where alcohol has been consumed, is a setup for an accident, not to mention a threat to our pets, our children, and the deer, elk, and moose who often wander down the road unimpeded. Our fifth concern when examining the location for the proposed parking lot is obvious that many tons, tons of field dirt will be required to create space for the cars that they want. Not only can we foresee the mud runoff from this construction onto our property, but also the very real possibility of degradation to Cedar Creek since this parking lot will be built on the Cedar Creek drainage. Cedar Creek is part of the vital recharge area for the Rathrum Prairie, making the building of this parking lot an environmental concern. We would like to ask that the county require an environmental impact statement be done before approving this permit. And lastly, on page 272, Section C of the Cootney Land Use and Development Code, it states that "Any proposal for a conditional use permit must address any negative social, environmental, or economic impacts on the area." I've already addressed the social and environmental impacts, but when you think about economic impact, I have no doubt that a wedding venue that occurs up to twenty-five times a year in spring, summer, and fall of the year with up to two hundred guests, which occurs a hundred feet from our property line, will have a negative impact on our property value. We ask for your careful and thoughtful consideration when you are making your decision on approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Ferguson.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Scott Ferguson. We live at 1535 South Starlight Drive. My family and I live above slightly north of the proposed, above and slightly north of the proposed event center. We are adamantly opposed to the development, along with at least a hundred and forty-three other neighbors in the vicinity who are also opposed. This information regarding, I'd like to provide information regarding noise levels. I did some research on the Brave Portal using their AI feature, and I discovered that a two-hundred-person event center generates an average of ninety to a hundred and fifteen decibels of noise, sound. A four-lane highway generates between seventy and eighty decibels. Highway sound generally becomes imperceptible at about three-point-three kilometers. We are three-point-five kilometers uphill from the freeway as the crow flies and can still hear it. Average tree forest acoustic deadening provides a maximum of ten decibels of noise reduction in a dense forested area. The area surrounding the proposed event center is with a hundred, within a hundred feet of some properties and five-hundred feet of many. Assuming a reduction of ten decibels in the most forested areas, the noise levels generated by the facility would likely equal the highest level of noise generated by a four-lane highway. The sounds generated will reach a radius of one kilometer or less at a minimum around the facility. How many people living next to a highway will tell you this level of noise is not uncomfortable. The event center will likely generate highway noise levels twenty-five times during the summer when local residents enjoy and share their downtime with family and friends on weekends and possibly during weekdays. In light of the disruption, why would, why would anybody think this is okay? The proposed event center will not only disrupt a quiet, peaceful residential neighborhood, it will bring in people from outside that have little or to no reason to consider the peace and quiet of our neighborhood. The proposal does not directly address this, stating management hours is not a solution. Maybe there are county guidelines or an ordinance that require noise level compliance, but I am unaware of them. Good intentions considered, I can envision managers mingling a party after several hours of celebration, telling people to quiet down to satisfy the neighborhood. Lighting will also be an issue, given the event center plans to operate after dark. There will be a persistent glow associated at night. Many people around Disneyland may have grown used to it, but Disneyland was there first. Lighting will also be an issue for the access road entrance through neighbors' properties due to vaguely defined road easements, undefined upgrades, maintenance, and usage the event center planners are interpreting loosely. These concerns go along with all the other issues previously outlined, including sensitive aquifer replenishment areas that will be impacted and should require an environmental, environmental impact study. Further downstream development that usually, almost always happens, and the intentions of a few that seemingly are more concerned about generating profit than living alongside their neighbors in a quiet, peaceful community, it makes sense a development like this would be better suited for a commercially zoned area, and further, further consideration should be halted. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Read into the record is HE 1012.
Russell Flam.
Hello. Hello, my name is Russell Flam. I have a wonderful wife, Devlin, and two sons, Bowen, who's nine, Barrett, seven. We're fortunate enough to move into our residence at 3068 South Greens Ferry Road around eleven years ago. Our seven-point-five-acre residence is approximately five hundred yards southwest of the proposed venue location. The access road, Little Cedar Lane, intended to be utilized by the venue. It borders our property and is a single lane, as many have already stated, primitive forest service road. Our primary concern is for our safety. The access to this event center site is surrounded by dense wooded trees and small legacy single-family homes. The fire danger related to the proposed use of the road is extreme, and my family and I fear greatly for our safety with the tremendous added use of the road and the limited ability for fire trucks to get our, to our location quickly and to navigate the little, the road, Little Cedar Lane. Additionally, the proposed plan seems to indicate a widening of sorts of this access road to approximately sixty feet. Granted, this road winds through neighboring residences and is cut into a very steep, sloping drainage, not really suited to extend in any direction. There's also no appearance of sidewalks in the proposed plan to, that, sorry, let's see here. Two concerns in this regard. First, if there is a plan to make this small backcountry road available for commercial use, especially with no sidewalks, then is my family and all our surrounding neighbors expected to no longer recreate on that road? Would the event center be expected to be serving alcohol? How could anyone reasonably expect to safely walk or use that road for residential purposes without those safety measures? If this event center was proposed in town near a bunch of residences, I'm sure the county would require proper sidewalks to be installed. Second, does the event center or the county expect to be invoking eminent domain to reclaim some of the nearby residences' land to widen the road that would ultimately be necessary for two-way traffic? Because with the current width of the road being so small, the only way the required sixty feet of road space is going to happen is they plan to excavate neighboring properties, and no one wants that. I don't, I know I don't want to give up twenty feet of our property either, which is right on the edge of the road. Other notable concerns, as previously mentioned, our home being within five hundred yards of the proposed event venue, which would sit down between two mountain peaks and a drainage. The sound in the drainage carries so incredibly far up the mountain, and that goes off each side of the mountain like an amphitheater. We are very concerned about hearing crowd presence, traffic, and loud music until 10:00 PM every weekend, which would most certainly impact our ability to enjoy, enjoy our own backyards, not to mention sleep that would be lost. We fear vandalism of our property, and inevitably the rise in potential theft, crime in our backyards by the two-hundred-plus guests at each event that will frequent the venue. This area is so far from commercial use-ready that our property values for everyone would suffer from the introduction of this event venue. We already have numerous event venues. I know there was a presentation with twenty-seven nearby. I don't see any reason to have another one nestled in a high-risk fire zone that has previously been presented. I respectfully do not want this permit to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Read into the record is HE 1013.
Douglas Albertson. Douglas M. Albertson or Douglas Malbertson, one or the other? Okay.
Thank you for the privilege of speaking. My name is Doug Albertson. I live at 7862 West Clementson, which is right over the hill from the location of this property. My greatest fear is fire, and I've had some experience with it. I don't care about the squeals of delight from revelers, so I cut down every blade of grass a hundred and fifty feet in a circle around my house, and I limb all the trees up fifteen feet high. About forty years ago, the top of the mountain, which is the barrier between this property and my house, was caught on fire with a human result. All the neighbors, including myself, grabbed our shovels and hoes and tractors and managed to get up there and put it out. There's no water available, and that's the situation here. There's no fire hydrants, and there's no firefighters on-site ready to put out a fire. The location of the fire station is probably southeast of Idaho in Post Falls, maybe about twenty minutes from this site. About two years ago, the neighbor right above our property decided that aerial fireworks were a great idea on the Fourth of July. And three neighbors, including myself, went up to discuss this defugality with him, and we were thrown off his property and told we'd be trespassed if we didn't leave immediately. I couldn't sleep, mostly because fireworks were falling really near our house. About two o'clock, the hillside erupted, and fortunately, I was awake. We got fire departments coming, four arrived, and we kept it down to about three acres. This cost my neighbor about thirty-five thousand dollars. Fortunately, it didn't increase my fire insurance, but fires like this all over the country are making fire insurance impossible to obtain. You've got about a mile of gravel road, which is the access and exit for two hundred people. Figure seventy-five to a hundred vehicles trying to get out. Figure seventy-five to a hundred vehicles trying to get out while fire trucks are trying to get in. I see the potential of converting a wedding into a cremation. There's lots of grass in the picture shown to prevent noise pollution from upwards of two hundred people. We still have enough rain, even though the seasons are drying, to grow grass in the spring. In later spring and summer, that turns into gunpowder. So, a minor spark, fireworks at a wedding, a car with a low catalytic converter parked on grass will start a fire. So, I guess my, my feeling is this is a poor idea for the neighborhood. It just doesn't make any sense with the amount of fires we've had in the area. Fortunately, around my house, we've been very, very lucky. Post Falls hasn't been so lucky. Bayview, areas around us have started on fire, and they've taken a long time to get out. So, I worry about my community, and I don't think a event center will make me feel better at night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Loder?
Good evening, Mr. Examiner. My name is Sarah Loder, and I, with my family, live in the Bella Ridge neighborhood, which is across the street from this proposed place of assembly, the Mitchell Event Center. We strongly oppose this conditional use permit because it fails to meet the mandatory findings required by Cootney County Code eight point eight point two zero one. The code is clear. No conditional use permit may be approved unless affirmative findings are made on all seven of the listed criteria in this section. This proposed place of assembly fails at least four of them. Due to the time constraints, I'm probably only going to be able to talk about three of those, so I would appreciate, I was planning on five minutes, I would appreciate a little bit of.
I'm gonna let everybody go over, so.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay, so the first thing I want to talk about is compatibility. The code requires that the proposal be compatible with existing homes, businesses, neighborhoods, and the natural characteristics of the area. This site is zoned rural, is surrounded by quiet family homes and private timbered acreage. People move here for the natural settings, the privacy and tranquility, not for commercial weddings with hundreds of strangers, traffic, and noise. I disagree with what Stephanie said here today, Stephanie Blalack. The proposal, the proposed commercial activity is simply not compatible with our rural zoned area. Second, hazards and impacts. The code requires that the proposal adequately addresses site constraints and hazards and adequately mitigates any negative environmental, social, or economic impacts. This proposal does nothing to address the life-threatening hazard of impaired drivers leaving their event on narrow, or narrow, rural roads that have no streetlights. Today, I heard them talk a little bit about the fire hazards, but until then, I hadn't heard anything, but they said today, from them at least, today that they said there'll be fire extinguishers on-site. Unfortunately, fire extinguishers are not adequate for this level of commercial activity. If the applicant points to fire hydrants that are, for example, in my neighborhood, these fire hydrants belong to the Greens Ferry Water and Sewer District. This is a district that the event center is not part of and does not help pay for. Adding a commercial fire load while not being part of a water district is unfair and unsafe to the community they claim to support. Third, adequate services and facilities. The code requires that services and facilities for the proposal are available and adequate. They are not. The only building on-site of the proposed place of assembly will be closed to the public, yet the county's own definition of place of assembly, Section eight point nine point four, uh, four zero one, states that a building is used as a facility for events, not a backyard. We heard from Cynthia Blalock today talking about this. I agree with every thing she said on this. This proposal doesn't even qualify as a place of assembly. And something else I want to mention on this, also included in the definition available with Section eight point nine point four oh one, it says that the owner shall, it shall be occupied by the owner. The applicant has said today that they will be living on-site. They also shared today that they started this application back in twenty twenty-three. They did. There's a CUP twenty-three dash zero zero one four that's available on the county website, and in it, they have a narrative, and in that narrative, they make no mention of living on-site. Instead, what they do say is that a venue coordinator will live on-site. So, I don't really feel I understand or actually know what their true intent is. Will they be living on-site? Or if this is approved, will they then find somebody else to live on-site? And then they wouldn't even meet the place of assembly criteria. I also disagree with Stephanie on conflict. I do think this is in conflict with the comprehensive plan, specifically, I won't go into it because I know I'm getting over time, but with Objective One B number three, which says that the commercial development in rural communities should serve the local residents and harmonizes with the communities. I don't think this is the case with this one. Mr. Examiner, this application is incomplete and non-compliant on its face. Approving it would tell every rural property owner in Cootney County that our zoning codes no longer matter. The commercial developments, that commercial developments can be forced into quiet rural residential areas against, against the clear rules we all rely on. Denying this conditional use permit is not anti-progress or anti-property rights. It's pro-accountability and pro-community. Bringing intensive commercial activity into a rural zone at the expense of other property owners is not an of-right use of private property. It's not a thoughtful use of the shared rural area, and it does not promote community cohesion. It creates conflict that typically ends in litigation. This litigation is avoidable when codes are upheld. Please uphold our county codes, protect our rural neighborhood, our safety, and our quality of life. Respectfully, please reject this application. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Read into the record is HE 1014.
Okay, I have Bill Starkweather, who may wish to speak.
Thank you for having me. My name's Bill Starkweather. I live, and my family live at ninety-three twenty-two West Ridgeline Lane. And the other day, well, last week, my wife was calling me blind. And the reason why she was calling me blind is she was asking me about the hearing that was coming up, and I told her I couldn't see, I didn't, couldn't see where the hearing was. Well, she says it's right down the road from, right road from you. And I was like, well, I'm too busy driving that road and watching not to hit wildlife. So, I'm against this CUP, and the reasons why, and I'll keep my comments real brief, is that I've served the community, I've served in community service for over thirty-plus years. My, my number-one priority at all stages during that service has been safety. That's my number-one priority for my kids. That's my number-one priority in the education system is the safety of kids. And this proposal is against the safety of our community. And no one can guarantee the behavior of others. With increased people, it increases increased danger, and that's including traffic with possible people under the influence. Any dangers, has anybody ever driven south of the proposed site going up South Greens Ferry? If there is any danger, like a fire caused by a dragging chain, an air cigarette butt, but, vehicle backfire, trying to go south, it's not going to happen if anybody's driven those roads. And if anybody's driven the road south on South Greens Ferry, if they're under the influence, they're not going to be making it home, going south. And with increased people, which has been talked about before, with increased people, more people seeing our beautiful area where we live, those people coming from either out of state, could be coming from outside, most likely outside our community, seeing this beautiful area means they're going to bring more crime to the area, seeing our beautiful area and where we live. It's just the nature of the beast, the nature of humans. And so, I respectfully oppose this CUP, and I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Justin Duva may wish to speak. Um, you can't give her your time, but.
She's also in the list, may want to speak.
You're next in the list. Okay, come on up, ma'am.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tricia Duva, obviously also representing the interests of my husband, Justin Duva. We live at nine zero nine eight West Ridgeline Lane, which is up at the top of the mountain from the proposed site. We are opposed to the conditional use of this and the creation of this venue for two reasons. So many have been said, we'll just repeat them to again express how important this is to our community. First, from a noise perspective, we made a significant investment and chose this particular area that we live in because it is quiet, it is rural, and the way that sound will roll right up that mountain, as someone had mentioned before, we are going to be very exposed to that sound. We're going to have potentially half of the weekends per year disrupted by the sounds of amplified music, wedding guests, and while revelry is wonderful, there are places for it, and our quiet neighborhood is not where we expected that to be. We can hear when our neighbor's dog is loose. We can hear when someone down the hill is coming home to their property. The way that sound travels, it really will have an impact and, and will continue to be disruptive to our property and, and the life that we've chosen to lead. Second, I'd like to speak as a former wedding and event photographer. For years, more, almost fifteen years, my husband and I had an event and wedding photography business. We have seen guests at weddings do stunning and atrocious things, particularly when they are inebriated, and again, I go to the fire risk that comes from that. We have seen guests use a single-sparkler to light tables on fire, to cause injury to themselves and to others, flying sparks, disposing of cigarette butts in places that are completely inappropriate, again, inebriation, and a lack of, you know, concern for the event. This is not their home, this is not their space. And while the applicant may have event experience, and they may have the best of intentions, they can't be responsible for babysitting and watching the intentions of every single guest. So, we know that there's the big potential for people to do something that may not seem a big deal to them, but all of the people in this room, I have a lot of trust in because I know that they won't use a chainsaw in the heat of the summer. They will be cautious when they're using their tractor and striking a stone because we all have a shared risk if our homes are at risk of a fire starting up. These people, thousands of people, as has been noted many times, coming into our community and coming into this property, don't have that shared risk. The owners do, but they are going to be one in a group of two hundred and can't possibly be expected to watch out for those people. Someone else mentioned their neighbor had lit a fire and had financial responsibility for that. Does the venue expect to carry financial risk if our entire hillside goes up in a fire based on something that happened at an event that they were hosting? The ingress and egress, the risk of all of us getting out, is a serious concern that we've heard fire chiefs talk about at community meetings with just the residents that are there, let alone adding in all of these people who are unfamiliar and who are potentially inebriated, unable to access, and panicked. Fire is scary. It's scary to people who are prepared for it and ready for it, and especially scary when people are in a strange location and do not feel they have control of the situation. So, we would request that the county consider denying this conditional use, and thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Smith or Smit may wish to speak? Okay. Okay, Kelly Broker may wish to speak? Name is seeming familiar. Okay, thank you. Jonathan Lakey? May wish to speak? Sorry, I didn't hear that. Oh, okay. Thank you. McKenna Ferguson may wish to speak? Would you like to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm McKenna Ferguson. I live at fifteen thirty-five South Starlight Drive, and I'm imposed to this event center. A lot of my points have already been made, so I'm going to try and keep this short on, and say a few rebuttals. So, I understand trying to find another source of income. Being a recent graduate, I have a lot to pay off, and I, sorry, Mom and Dad, I love you, I don't want to live with you forever. But my job wouldn't be at the cost of other people's peace, quiet, and safety. I understand the Mitchell's character. A lot of people have spoke highly of them and respect their land and their neighbors, but ultimately, they're not sharing the revenue with us. My neighbor, Jim Brett, who was here, he had to leave. He lives about a thousand feet away from our house, and there are many dense trees that stand between our houses. When he sits out on his deck during the summertime, I can hear him laughing and talking with whomever's, whoever is visiting. Most times, it's my dad. His deck is uphill as well, and we note sound travels better uphill compared to downhill. No, trees are not a noise buffer. I can hear them talking at a normal voice. But also, I'm a scientist. What studies have been done to back up this claim? Has there been a survey? Sorry, that was rhetorical. Can we blast music and see how many of us can hear it? And maybe request Fish and Game to come out and perform a survey? Because there are a lot of animals that come out. I think I'm very lucky to have a moose walk right up to my window and breathe on the glass. I don't think music, litter, and traffic will let us have that happen again in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kirk David may wish to speak?
Kirk David, two four zero one zero North McCoy Road, Cootney County. Almost all of the points that I was going to make have been made several times, so I'm going to just maybe make one or two that I think haven't been emphasized, and we've all been here for a long time, so. One thing that I did want to get on the record, it was referred to, but I want to specifically name it into the record, is the fact that the Cootney County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan mentions that they, they have dreamed up or identified. mentions that they have dreamed up or identified twenty-seven hazards in Cootney County, and at the top of the list, number one is wildfire. So all these folks that have been testifying here, they're not a bunch of sensationalists, from the sheriff on down. That's, you can, you can look in the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, it's been in the Comp County Comprehensive Plan. It was updated and restated as early, or excuse me, as late as August of this year. So just wanted to mention that. The other thing that I will hopefully be short about is this is not, as we have heard tonight, not a compatible use, it's a conflicting use because at the same period of time, from spring to fall, when these venues are supposed to happen, is the operational period for the neighbor who's managing Timberland. Okay, and I just feel like the conflict here is not, there's not going to be anybody happy on the Mitchell family side or the neighbor's side. Hear a lot about, you know, noise and whatnot. I think we're going to have a lot of unhappy and crying brides and a lot of pissed-off mother-in-laws when the smoke and the chainsaw noise and the crawler tractor noise is coming right up the hill below that site. It's just not, not a compatible use, and it's rural land being put to a rural use now. So I just don't, I think the Mitchells are going to be disappointed in the relationship out there. So maybe they think twice about what they're doing. And really, they're just tiny little thing that you can notice on this site plan map. Here's the parking lot, and here's this winding, nice little gravelled, supposedly going to be gravelled trail going down the hill. Isn't this wonderful? When some smoke or some flame comes up over that hill and you've got 200, 150 people panicking, that, if you, every one of those topographical lines there represents two feet in elevation. So that's 100 feet elevation over an eighth of a mile run, if you can run, but that's the equivalent of climbing a 10-story building in your high-heeled shoes. The other little minor thing, the entrance into that parking lot, right at the little piece that sticks off the side, that's a 15% grade coming up out of that hole, back up onto the road. Most public highways never exceed more than 6%, even a logging road, 10% maximum. So you're going to have some trouble right there. So in case you wondered, I'm adamantly opposed to this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to double check, but I believe the rest of the names I have here are opposed and have, I think the bottom two didn't mark anything, but the rest of them marked "do not wish to speak." So I'll ask if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak. Okay, you raise your hand first, so ma'am, you can come on up. Is your name in here?
I thought it was.
Okay, are you maybe one of the couple at the end? Shelley Crawford or Sandra Willis?
Davalou Cummings. If it's marked that I don't want to speak, I obviously did that incorrectly without my glasses. It's on Taurus Court.
Of course, you're going to be the last one I look at. It might be in a different stack, but I apologize, we'll make sure we get your name written down or I'll find it after, but...
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Go ahead, tell me your name again, and go ahead.
My name is Davalou Cummings, and my address is eight six eight one West Taurus Court. I live in the Sundown Ridge Estates, which is actually county, even though it's a Coeur d'Alene address. And I just wanted to mention really quickly before I read this, that we've heard a lot about Greens Ferry onto Riverview, but there's also Greens Ferry the other direction can end up on Highland Drive, and that's going to be affected. That's a direction between Greens Ferry and 95, so that is also going to be a course of travel that's affected. My husband and I own and reside on rural property in Cootney County, approximately one-half mile uphill, straight line from the proposed event center. We oppose the approval of this permit. Upon reviewing the staff report produced by the county, this phrase came to mind: All things are lawful, but not all things are helpful. In other words, just because you can doesn't mean you should. This phrase is perfectly applicable to the event venue. Our area is a quiet wooded area away from city life and commercial activity. This event center is not compatible with the rural residential character of the existing community for numerous reasons, some of which I will expound upon and others which I will only have time to mention in closing. Our area supports rich wildlife, including moose, elk, deer, bear, and many other species. The event center's season overlaps with birthing season, which will increase risk to young wildlife. Increased noise, lighting, human presence, and traffic will disrupt migration, nesting, and reproduction, increase wildlife displacement, fragment habitat, disrupt nocturnal wildlife, disturb ecosystems, increase roadkill risk for wildlife and motorists, and introduce invasive species to native ecosystems. Our area is heavily forested and highly prone to wildfires. As you've heard, the Cootney County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan rates wildfires as the highest level risk. This event center will increase fire risk because it brings more people and vehicles into the area with limited evacuation routes during high-risk fire season. This concern has even been realized as area homeowners have lost their insurance over the past few years due to fire risk. The event center's increased risk profile could result in more homeowners losing insurance or experiencing increased premiums. According to ChatGPT, when you combine the sound from just 10 cars, a generator, amplified DJ music, and 200 guests, the total sound level reaches approximately 100 decibels, which is equivalent to standing next to a jackhammer or a small rock concert. For events, Cootney County Land Use and Development Code sets a maximum allowed noise level of 75 decibels for events. Trees do not efficiently absorb all sound. As a matter of fact, they absorb higher and mid-range sounds, but not low-level sounds or low-range sounds. Mountainous and forested terrain can amplify and channel low-sound frequencies. Because of the event center residents, excuse me, because of the event center, residents will experience a total loss of peace. The noise will disrupt our serene environment, peaceful lifestyle, and be a significant and unreasonable burden on residents. It will destroy our enjoyment of any outside activities. Events will create light pollution that eliminates our dark skies and natural nighttime environments. Event lighting, parking illumination, and headlight traffic will disrupt residents and wildlife. Private access road lighting would further worsen light pollution. In conclusion, my husband and I strongly oppose this conditional use permit because it results in loss of overall rural character and lifestyle, increased noise and light pollution, increased traffic and congestion, reduced emergency response capability, increased fire danger and risk of cancellation or significant increase to homeowners' insurance, environmental degradation, and wildlife disruption, danger to the established high-priority, sensitive aquifer recharge area, inadequate infrastructure for a high-capacity venue, increased tax burdens on homeowners resulting from wear of roads and increased public safety burden, increased risk of crime, trespass, and impaired driving, long-term commercial encroachment into rural neighborhoods resulting in reduced property values. The Mitchell Event Center is fundamentally not compatible with the surrounding community, and this permit should be denied. Additionally, request an environmental impact study be conducted before this matter is advanced. Thank you. And may I please enter a copy into the record?
Read into the record is HE 1015.
Okay, thanks. And can I have you, we'll have you write your name and address down. We might have misplaced it, we might have not, but...
Sir, yeah, I'm going to grab my copy.
Okay, again, if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak, okay, come on up, ma'am. Or, yeah. Are you Shelley Crawford or Sandra Willis by chance?
Stevens. I gave it to the clerk, she took it from me.
Hopefully, we can find it later, otherwise, I'll have you write it down again, we're shuffling a lot of papers tonight, so go ahead.
So I'm Dean Stevens, and I live at two one five one South Starlight Drive in the Sundown Ridge Estates. My husband Bruce and I own and reside on the property that shares the eastern boundary with the Mitchells. We learned of the submitted permit request through our neighbors. At first, the proposal did not seem overwhelming, overly concerning. However, the more we considered the potential impacts, the more serious our concerns became. We feel very fortunate to live on a rural property surrounded by large wooded parcels of land. This environment is exactly what motivated us to search for and build our dream home in this area. Our concerns are not new, but they are significant and deserve careful consideration. Fire risk. Our property lies directly in the natural uphill fire path. A wildfire in this area will be extremely difficult to control. As landowners, we have responsibility to take precautions to minimize risk, and any development that increases fire exposure is alarming. Environmental impact. When we built our home, we were required to ensure that we did not disrupt the seasonal creek running through our property onto the Mitchells. We were restricted in where we could build fencing or any structure. The proposed parking lot would require substantial alteration of the natural landscape. While it is not a building, it would still involve grading and modifying the land. A thorough environmental study is essential, not only to evaluate these changes, but also to assess potential impacts to the critical recharge area of the Rastor Aquifer which the property sits. Property values and rural character. This rural area is highly valued for its wooded land, peace and quiet, natural habitat, and the limited development. An event center directly contradicts these qualities. It would diminish the very characteristics that make our home and this community unique and treasured. Additionally, the proposed permit appears to represent the minimum requirements necessary for approval. We are concerned that this may be the only beginning of further development of the property. Compliance and feasibility. We have been told to expect around 200 attendees and workers for each event, yet only 48 parking places are planned. This would require an unrealistic average of four-plus people per vehicle. If needed, where would the additional vehicles be parked? Who will oversee compliance with attendance limits, noise restrictions, parking, and other conditions? If violations occur, how many would be allowed before the permit could or would be revoked? We understand that growth and development are inevitable, but they must be done responsibly and with careful consideration for the existing residents and the environment. For these reasons, we strongly urge you not to recommend approval of this permit. The overwhelming disapproval from surrounding homeowners and the broader community reflects how incompatible this proposal is with character and safety of the area. Thank you for your attention and thoughtful review of these concerns.
Thank you, ma'am.
Read into the record is...
We can have you write your name on there as well, again...
HE 1016.
In case we don't have you on here. Okay, again, I'm going to call if there's anyone else here who may have signed up and does wish, yes, sir. You already did speak, is that correct?
I did, and let me get to the microphone. So I'm Steve Tanner, two five nine six South Greens Ferry Road, and I did speak. I'd like to request to amend my testimony, and the reason is Mr. Mitchell, in his statement, made mention about a meeting that he had with my wife and I in 2023 before they bought the land, whether we would support an event center there. And that was between October 11th and October 15th. On October 15th, we had a meeting with him, and October 15th, I sent him a very lengthy email why we could not support an event center there, and we'd like to have them as neighbors, but we could not do that. And had I known that was going to be in his statement, I would have included that email string in my testimony, and I'd like to request to do that now.
I'm not sure it'll be necessary for me to have that email on the record, but your testimony is now on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to, who is here who wishes to speak? Saw a hand for half a second? Nope. Okay. All right. If there is still anybody connected on the telephone, again, there's no way for us to select you individually, but we're going to go ahead and unmute you and see if there's anyone on the telephone who wishes to speak.
The lines have been unmuted.
All right, the line is unmuted. Is there anybody on the telephone? Nope. Okay.
Carl, I'm going to read one more into the record. Read into the record Kirk David's statement, HE 1017.
Okay, that is going to conclude tonight's public comment portion of the hearing. Now is the opportunity for the applicant and/or the city staff, if city staff wants to say anything else, but primarily, this is an opportunity for the applicant to give rebuttal testimony. It is their application, so they are going to get the last word on their application. So you do have up to 15 minutes to make any comments, you so wish.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Examiner. I did submit a comment sheet, so you should have that in the record. The first thing I'd like to address is the issue of fire that we've heard so much about tonight. The Mitchells have committed to meeting all of Cootney County's fire and rescues conditions. Gerald Archer, the fire marshal, conducted not one but two inspections of Little Cedar Lane, all of the Mitchells' property, and he did that along with Stephanie Blaylock to be sure that he had adequate view of what the development would look like, the road, the venue, and then wrote his letter, which you have now. Tim had actually invited him out before he ever bought the property, just to be sure that what he was desiring to do would be in line with the fire district. And yes, there are pinch points on Cedar Lane, as was brought up, but that is a 60-foot-wide easement, and right now, you've got a travelway of maybe 20 feet at max, but the requirement by the fire district has been that that road be improved to their standards, which they will inspect to ensure that those pinch points no longer exist. Verdis employs a retired fire chief who spent his entire life and career serving in California, and he's certainly qualified to prepare, if that becomes one of your requirements, whether it's him or someone else, a fire mitigation plan that would include an evacuation plan, and he would do that in conjunction not only with the fire district, but the sheriff's office, to be sure that both of those agencies are on board. We heard talk about the one ingress and egress, and I guess I'm just prepared to address the other three venues that are successful in the county. Stephanie had mentioned them, Elk Point, Settlers Creek, and Cedar Mountain. We were the planner for all three of those. All three of those were approved and have been operating safely and efficiently since their approval. In fact, as Stephanie mentioned, Settlers Creek... their approval. In fact, as Stephanie mentioned, Settlers Creek was approved in 2008, and yet the county has never received one complaint because they have adhered strictly to their conditions of approval. All of those do have the one access, and not one of them had a fire evacuation plan. I'm not saying that this one shouldn't be required, just saying it wasn't a requirement at the time. I think it's a great idea, and I fully support it. There was a discussion about waste from the gentleman from Greens Ferry Water District, and I just want to emphasize that porta-potties will be utilized. There won't be any additional drain field, other than the drain field that's already been in place for their home. We heard some testimony about excessive amounts of traffic during egress as the event is over, but as Mr. Mitchell has informed us, it's a very staggered leaving because some of it is our workers, their staff, and then venue participants do leave at staggered times. Not greatly, but it's not a traffic jam like a concert. And also, I want to mention, we did double the parking spaces that were required by the ordinance, so we could certainly increase those more, but we're already at double capacity for what the county requires. We heard a lot of talk about Little Cedar, but the only ones who use Little Cedar Road are the Mitchells. The Tanner's tenant and the Weeks have approaches. They actually front Greens Ferry Road, so Little Cedar is not their access. While they may have easement to it, I know the Weeks' easement is solely for agricultural and recreational use. Many that were opposed tonight don't live near that venue, not near the Mitchells' home site. There was a concerted effort by opposition to put together packets of information that they had gathered and then to canvass door-to-door and hand those out, even to sites that are over a mile away. So I just want to be clear on that. Not everything you've heard tonight have been from people in the immediate area. And then I think I would just like to mention, and I know you know this as an attorney and as a hearing examiner, and also staff covered it adequately. This request adheres to Idaho Code, conforms to the zoning ordinance, aligns with the county's future land use map, and fits squarely with the purpose and intent of CUP standards. We ask that you approve our request for a CUP for a place of assembly in the rural zone. And if you have any questions for me, I stand.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Callahan or any staff, any administrative issues?
I do need to read one more into the record. The comment from Roy Eli would be HE 1018.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Hearing Examiner. I just wanted to address one comment that came in that addressed noticing, proper noticing, that they didn't know about the date or anything because they couldn't see the sign. That posting was done appropriately according to ordinance. One was posted on affronting South Greens Ferry Road, adjacent right to West Little Cedar Lane. The other was posted up at the project site where the driveway deviates from West Little Cedar Lane. I didn't know if Director Callahan wanted to discuss the environmental impact analysis section that Paul O'Callaghan has addressed.
Thank you. I can just mention that under our code and under state law, we cannot require an environmental impact study. In Idaho, those are reserved for matters in which federal money is used for federal projects or state projects that use federal money. But local governments have no authority to impose environmental impacts statements unless their local code has somehow included that. Ours does not.
Mr. Hearing Examiner, if I might, just two quick points that I omitted.
Sure.
One is that a lot of concern about noise levels. I know in the other conditional use permits we've been a part of, there have been decibel levels set at the property line, and we would certainly have no problem with that. Anywhere from 60 to 70 has seemed to be the norm. And then there was some concern too about the venue growing outside of what has been presented tonight. And condition 8.112, which I'm sure you're familiar with, you've looked at the staff report, does require a logbook to document the number of events, the hours, the decibel levels at the property line, which I would suggest, and that is to be viewed by the county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else from staff, I'll say that I believe I have enough information in the record on which to base my recommendation, so this will bring us to the end of tonight's hearing. I do want to thank everyone who came tonight for being respectful, polite, directing your comments towards me. Understand this is a contentious issue. And again, just want to thank you all for how you acted tonight, given, I won't repeat myself anymore. Just thank you, thank you very much. But with that, I'm going to close the record on CUP 25-0008. Thank you all for coming tonight. Have a good evening. Safe travels.